Right, and obviously the jury can tell us all the time, but that's who they have on this. How significant the back which does know this well?
It's very significant, yeah, I feel like if.
I'm sorry, could you repeat, you said because the water company did what?
You know that sanitation, usually they were in the sanitation, two or three months, I think, two, two or three months. As far as the expenses, service part, administration. Administration is.
Okay, next.
As situated.
No.
I'm saying. I've been losing now for the last council meeting, that's one of the. You know, the increase in water rates, I think that's same year. And so. The increase, the, the water. Two thousand dollars worth of. That's a lot of. So.
The reason why we keep the sanitation, better, we must have heard.
The W A, I'm sure that that plays a big part in it.
If you remember when, I forget who was coming in here that, that was assisting us. You know, expense on, on the citizens.
So you didn't take the second option, you took the option where you just would just cover the cost of those bonds.
But every year rates go up though.
Yeah, they go up, the last couple of years, we've been doing, the cost of living increase. That's the cost of living increase, everything, fuel's gone, a lot of the other expenses have gone up as well.
So, if the, if the sanitation department is, I mean, if the water department not paying sanitation department, and we're gonna talk about trucks later on. When you think three months behind, that's about how, roughly how much money that is?
They average about a hundred, sanitation fees average about a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars a month, so.
So, so for three months, we, we can buy, we can basically, with the money they own, we can basically buy a new, new garbage truck. It wouldn't have to take a lease out, a lease out any, see. To me, I feel like that's not fair to the sanitation department. That if the money's supposed to be collected and given to the sanitation department, but you don't pay, you hold it, that's still.
No, it's not, those are general funds, general funds can be used, general funds can be used for any reason.
But, but the, the citizens, okay. The citizens pay, pay a sanitation charge, right?
Yes.
So when their garbage get picked up late, because they'll, they have to rent a truck, they don't have a truck. Well, I see on the agenda, we got garbage trucks, well, garbage get picked up late, folks got overtime, sanitation department. But my thing, and that still was the wrong word. But you mean to tell me that it's okay to hold another department's money, it's, it's all in the same bucket. But these folks can, can have overtime, they can have fees, they need to do the better, our sanitation department. Well, what is, what if the sanitation department's holding the water for us? So, I mean, the cities, we, we need different things. And I just don't think you hold it three months worth of money. You say it's all the same, but they just collecting it for the sanitation department. That's all the water, it's supposed to collect that money, then turn it over to them, right?
Yes.
So, I don't think, so does that look right? The sanitation department, they need garbage trucks and this department collects that money. This is the other guy question.
Somebody came near me now.
Oh, I didn't even mention what the water.
Nah, this is my phone line.
Been a long hand down. The food rate increases, three hand down.
Nine.
Whole post hand down.
Yes.
My question. Okay, so the water department is holding, we say they really have always just left.
Yes.
That money should just flow through water. And you gave an explanation. But I might give this low, so I'm asking the same question again, forgive me, but. What is it that's missing in the projection when we did our budget? Why, why are fees for bonds, why does this stuff not count? I mean, I would prefer it to come, it doesn't make sense to how we didn't. Make a proper projection about who we were over, but expenses do that.
When we approved the budget, and so are we overspending, what we taking in the water department, or is it something else? I, I don't get it.
I'm thinking now, the way, when I budgeted, I didn't budget the budget to be so tight. I'm, I'm just guessing that, that I probably missed a mark on some of the expenses, especially with the, some of the. He coming around on, I think, that's one large expense with the water department. I don't know the equivalent, he knows what I'm talking about, the.
Bypasses. Yeah, the bypass pumps.
And so, yeah, so those, that was a significant, unexpected expense. It was significantly more than I budgeted for, that I thought it would be. I guess, and they're having issues with fuel costs as well, like the other departments. And so, some of the expenses are just more than what we expected. I think the revenue is coming in, like, you know, pretty much like we expected revenues coming in, but the expenses are just a little bit more. The debt service was budgeted for, but like I said, they do account on a thin line as far as the budget was concerned. And it wasn't gonna be a large profit, it wasn't gonna be a six-figure profit, I think. I think that was like a surplus, like fifty thousand dollars, so. So that's what it was. So some of the expenses were just higher than expected.
What could, could some of that, could, could some of that be this, Mr. Turner? You know, we had the emergency, there was a lot of spending going on, this, this might have been the proof. Could that be something, could, could that be something, could we share some light? That there was some spending going on that we.
We had.
I mean, we all wrong.
No, no, what I'm saying is, the emergency. Instead of.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, so those, those were a lot of unexpected expenses as well.
So, how did we spend in that state, or that city emergency? How much, how, how much did we spend, and are we still spending in that?
I'm not sure exactly how much, because I haven't, like, segregated the expenses. As far as the state of emergency, I just haven't pulled those out, so I'm, I'm not really aware of how much, exactly how much we spent on those particular expenditures.
Are, are we still spending in an emergency?
We shouldn't be.
So, do, I know you say you don't have a rough number, but from your last treasury report, can you, do you think you could tell me how much was spent in?
No, like I said, I have a segregated, like, regular expenses from state, state of emergency expenses.
So.
I mean, if it was a repair, it's, it's in a repair line, so I don't have a state of emergency line.
So would this be a question I should ask the office manager, because she should know, somebody should know. That's been almost a year ago, that we had that issue, and we don't have numbers.
Well, I thought, I thought the man said he was keeping up, keeping up with it, I thought that's what he said, so.
I'm not sure what your question is.
My question.
Question, we have multiple water emergencies, so we're gonna have to.
So, so.
We're also in one right now.
But is it, but we don't know that, so.
Yeah, you did. We've had several meetings on them, so if you don't know, that's not because we have the technology. But you're gonna ask, that's how much water emergency, I'll give that to you specifically, but I can tell you, when you probably, thinking. One of the win, winner, we had. A all night, three or four days situation, we were, we were, for everybody in Hellenside. And many cities in Arkansas, even these cities like Jackson City, Memphis, Lost Mark, to the residents, we were able to. Manage, prevent that to happen. Which was incredible feat that I mentioned to our, our folks. But it was a tense time, but we had years and years and years of hard water maintenance. So we're having paid costs now, all those years and years of not having right structure what they should do. And in fact, we're still way behind, many years West Town had a process where they would price. Water lines, the big ones, they could be gradually increasing as they went, so that residents, lines certainly be ready to get replaced. Since that time, that has occurred for a known number of reasons, most of it's financial. So we're having to pay costs along with the maintenance or be reliable, let's have a watch that. But we'll have to write it down, because with that circle, I don't know, since we're in the right of.
What's the water number then?
Well, I'm very water emergency, I think it's, I think it's a hundred and twenty days. We're still on it, we have multiple water routes.
A hundred and twenty days? Well, I'm having, where, where is the water, where is, what, what is the emergency?
Well, we had multiple pumps down, I can ask our water manager about it, but we had. We didn't have time to stop, if you wanted to have water for citizens to go. We had multiple pumps around lift stations, it was a pretty serious crisis, and we still have a crisis in terms of water leaks and a ton. We're still, where, where is that crisis almost every day? We are still literally in state of crisis down in the water.
Okay, but I'm, my question is, can you say pump twenty-two? And you, you just can't say a water emergency, because what you're saying is a, you know, pumping, hell, then what's going on? I'm asking you to clarify what, what the emergency is, because you can just declare a water emergency out of definition of what you.
Well, we, we.
Not legally in.
We had a meeting on it, and.
Who had a meeting?
The city council, with special call meeting on water department issues, we had, I tried to have a special call meeting, separate pages.
This was about it, and I'm just speaking for one, the only special call meeting that I had in an hour ago. Was the one that was supposed to be yesterday at three o'clock, I have not heard anything about a special call meeting by the end of water department, maybe I was. Coming my email, I got a smell, maybe that's why I don't know.
Well, we've had more.
So you actually had a meeting?
We've had meetings, and we've, we've attempted special call meetings, so we've had times when we get through it.
So you, you.
So, I mean, what is your specific question?
I'm trying to ask the question, what is a water emergency?
I just answered it.
No, you didn't, you're not, all you're saying is you declared a water emergency, you're not saying, you're not giving any specifics though.
We had pumps down, or.
Pumps. They got, they got, they got.
Are you gonna let me answer?
Yeah, but I'm, I'm actually forced to use the.
Our citizens, our citizens, relying on our water and sewer department.
And I know that's a lot.
For water, to be able to drink, to cook, to take a bath, and to flush and pull it. And right now, those systems are in a state of severe emergency all across our city. And that's because we've had at least ten years of the air maintenance cost, and that's all catching up to us now. We have extreme water events like we had in winter, it makes it even worse. Mr. Patterson's here, if you want him to address it. But the bottom line is, we have bypasses on all of our places, that's costing us hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. Because we haven't been able to invest in our pump stations, in our lift stations. All these things that we're trying to address with the help of federal government, some of this can be done as well as the increased cities, citizens are paying. But we've had a multiple number of prices, with that pumps down, pump stations down. The thing that's on the budget is about something to naff down Sebastian, the water leak, I mean, it's on the agenda.
No.
Whatever, I mean, I've answered your question multiple times.
No, no, I'm, and I don't know why you, I don't know if it's just me, but it seems like you have a problem with asking these questions. My, the reason I'm asking the question, because I'm one of those citizens that wants a good wall. And I know many more, but I don't think that you're being clear about what's going on, because I don't know, I, and I'm.
Did anybody, do anybody else remember attending the special call meeting about the water?
I was the one back in the station, that's the last.
Yeah, I remember that, I probably just have it somewhere now.
As I'm listening to this back and forth dialogue, is, I think the question is, tell me exactly what you did, and answers, we did a whole bunch of stuff. Kind of like, if I say, yeah, I did a lot of yard work, but I could say I did a lot of yard work, I could say I cut my grass, I aged it, I fertilized it. Or I, I, and, and there's no specifics about what happened, you're saying, we met, we met, we met, and she's saying, but tell me specifically what you did. And to quite honestly, it appears like you're dodging the question, you're dodging the answer to the question. And if you don't know, and we need somebody else to say these other things, itemize what we did, that's fine, we can get somebody else to itemize it. But there's a non-answer to the question that's being given, we just did a bunch of stuff. And so I think that's why we keep, she keeps asking the same question.
The race now sitting at the highest, these, the dark cities, the polar, publicly non-public, she's in favor of radio, maybe with special call meetings, attempted that meetings. They've been very public, whether or not you're aware of it is, I like to say we made it, but that's that issue. The second issue is what have we done? I'll try to say it more clearly, we had pump stations, lift stations that were down in Hellenside. We had to bypass pumps, we had to replace pumps, they had sewage in the streets that were violations, EPA, that is very, very racist. We had no options, unless we wanted to pay ten thousand dollars for that fines. So, yeah, it was an emergency, that's why I'm pretty much, we're still in that one, still have sewer issues. The other day, we had a roof station, bypass pump had a blow, for a while, sewage from time to time in the streets, that's a violation. Mr. Jones here, he's an environmental officer, that's a violation, have we been in violation of EPA rules, Mr. Jones, in the last hundred and twenty days? That's what I think, I don't know, you have.
And where.
And where we're responsible.
I understand, so we're fixing those problems.
So that's just specific examples, I don't know what else, Mr. Patterson, you can come up and address more specifics.
We can get to more details, but this is about the treasury report, not about the water.
We did talk about, when we were going to raise the citizens a fee, we talked about infrastructure improvements. We also talked about lift stations, down pumps, running on bypass, we asked for reports, we never get written reports. Sometimes verbal, but mostly never written reports, so a lot of things get lost in translation, and I think we can do better than that. I, we haven't had a report in maybe two years, the last one was some leaks that were being fixed, and that report was not exactly correct. I'm saying that the communication is not good.
Well, I bet, we had a special call meeting on this issue. Former, the former water director, Jack Ross, was contracted, and he did a report along with Ken Wallen, that y'all approved, that you received. Detailing all the issues that we just discussed, and that was not only not two years ago, when even a year ago, when even probably six months ago. And y'all attended most, if we had a form for that meeting, I remember.
It was, he said it's been six months ago, but all time, you said, Mr. Turner, hold on, because it, it ties into treasury. Next, what all, you paid a guy ten thousand dollars consulting fee, all the, that's what, what was the total of expenses that you paid through this? That's, that's all I wanna know, water's fine, but you can't give us a dollar amount, you. You that was last year. You spent that money with Jack Ross and and Big Ed's breakfast right here when you spend in water again. Y'all spent that and paid him. You got all you see, you got all this stuff fixed. What is the dollar amount? How much did you all spend? And that was the only thing that I know that we had then. This man, that's the only thing I know we called a state of emergency for the water problem. Then we had when Jack Ross came here, you paid as a consultant to come here and tell us this, that, and the other. And then we got a water manager. So what is the total cost, Mr. Turner, from that point to this one? How much money have we spent? Because a hundred and twenty days are open. You only have a hundred and twenty days for a a wait a minute, Mr. Mayor, and if I wrong, you can correct me, but you only have a hundred and twenty days for a state of emergency. Then you had to do. Would you come back to us and say, hey, I'm doing this? So in actuality, I think that you have what it what is, is money being spent that we don't know about. But at the end of the day, it's gonna say, can y'all clean this mess up? Because I know there is some money had to be spent. If the water department can't pay the sanitation fee, they live out of water department money. Let what last time I got a check for the water department, man?
Uh, last month.
How much money?
Uh, hundred and thirty eight thousand.
When you get three months high, folks, I want to repost them. So the water probably should be making some money. And if you spend, if you if the money hasn't been spent, it has. You know, I I wish that y'all would just be more honest with us about what's going on because we don't really know. Because we don't have the day to day operations. And I think that's what a lot of these people around the table, they don't have trust because of that right there. And I and I'm I'm not gonna argue with nobody. It's it's just it's just a waste of breath because you're all gonna continue to do what you've been doing. Because we because we've been in pandemic and you've been spending pandemic heavy. That's what it is. Yeah, yeah, I've been spending pandemic heavy. And when it comes out, when stuff, when folks find out about y'all leaks and y'all pay paying these folks, then you would, I ain't like that. Just be honest with us. We over the money. We over. We property and money is what we over. Y'all y'all spending like like I don't care, but if we if we decide to do something, we on the front page of the of the hell world. That what they call? We on the front of that paper. So I think y'all should be honest because I ain't got no alliance. If I if I knew y'all was doing something, I'd tell it. They know not to tell me because I'm gonna tell it.
So you had an opportunity.
A point here later where you're gonna ask for eight hundred and something plus dollars from the pandemic money that we've already appropriated for the water and sewer expenses to get us caught up to try and get residual hill clean, to try and get west the west tank clean so that we know we get the sludge, possibly lead. It's never been inspected. It's you're wanting to spend eight hundred thousand dollars on on a Christmas bonus. And at the same time, in the same meaning, you're you're saying you're saying that.
You think you thought, how much have you spent? How much have you spent over there?
Now you're interrupting me and talking and talking.
Tell the citizen that how much have you?
You think you can talk all you want?
Because because you because you know, you pay you pay your friend. Get these citizens what they get these uh employees what they deserve. You can talk about eight hundred dollars, but how much have you spent? How 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 many checks have you written for flood people houses out that 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 our uh our water department, our fire department can flush these houses out? We was nice enough to give you. We gave you a gift to get some folks. You gotta truck the job, pack and stuff in and like a hot mess because you the the folks have been trained. You don't even know what it's like. Only thing you want to do is say, I'm doing this. Everything you're doing is backfired. Only thing look good over there at real parties you paid to got to cut five thousand dollars every week. You want the real part look good and efficient turn to tear. That's the only thing you've got to do. And you and I if I pay somebody five thousand, pay, this is what he has done. Pay somebody five thousand dollars to build a fence, you buy the material. But with anything under your spending limit, these serial contracts, tell the tell the city how you start doing these serial contract.
I'm not aware of it.
Yeah, but see, that's what the treasure report come, Mr. You should you should stand up and say.
Ms. Franklin. Ms. Franklin, you don't.
You should say, stand up.
Ms. Franklin, you don't you don't you don't run the meeting.
I ain't running.
And you don't talk over people.
I still had the floor.
No, you don't have the floor. You never had the floor. You interrupted and you talked over everybody.
Yeah.
Now, we're still in the treasury report.
I got questions.
And we'll discuss. We'll discuss. We're gonna move on to new business.
How can we move on to the treasury report?
I'm not taking any more questions.
This ain't your meeting. This is a city council meeting.
We're not recognized. We're not recognized. No, no, ma'am. Recognized either, Ms. Cocke.
That's not proper. That's not proper. What you're doing is not proper.
It's completely proper.
No, it's not.
It's my job to try and run a civilized.
No, it's not your job really because we had.
That's exactly what my job is.
No, it's not because we had a very decent meeting last week when you wasn't here.
Now, it is now six forty five. And we haven't gotten past the treasury report. If we want to get to the other items on this agenda, many of these items which you wanted on here, then we have to.
Who is you?
Lot of accusations have been made about me that are absolutely baseless, but I we don't have time for me to sit here and have a debate, and I'm not gonna waste the time with it. No, ma'am. It's cocky.
But you could talk when you want to talk. You could say what you want to.
He'll get red carded inward.
Run the meeting.
You don't either.
Yes, I do.
No, because we're gonna appoint somebody else. We're gonna appoint somebody else.
We're gonna move on to new business.
Let's say let's accept this pandemic.
Ms. Davis requesting updates on West Side School condemnation, time on repair numerous water leaks and the hiring of two new code officers. Ms. Franklin, if you can't behave at a meeting, then you need to leave and have your conversations outside. But we're trying. We have a form. We're trying to take care of business for the public. Okay? Now, West Side School condemnation. I was hoping Mr. Valley would be here for this. This is this is really in his neck of the woods, but I will tell you that the like the the last code officer who was working on that had the files on that. I saw the letters that went to the school. I even discussed the letters with people who represented the organization. I know they were sent. We don't have copies of them uh since that code officer left. So we're trying to find copies of them. Uh, we're trying to retrieve it from my stuff for that computer. That's where I'm what I'm aware of. I was saying to Mr. Valley, when you hear. Shows up later, we can go back to that. The time, the reason that letter is important is there's a timeframe that kicks off from the day that letter from the day they receive. I know they received it because they came to me about it. And I saw the letter, so I know it was sent. But we don't have a copy of the letter for Mr. Valley to use legally, and that's kind of where we are.
But it's been past thirty days, probably been sixty days, and that's all we had was thirty, right? Had to give them.
Yes, that's exactly right.
With the paperwork missing.
The file is not complete, but otherwise you're absolutely right. And I I agree with you, and I'm hoping Mr. Valley can respond to that later. I'm I'm happy to report and Ms. Ms. Patterson is here if you want to celebrate on it. On the Helena side, the vast majority of the leaks have been repaired. We have a couple of significant ones still in Helena side on Disco on Oakland that's related to private property leak, but at the same time, it's degrading some public roadway, so we have to deal with that. We still have all the other infrastructure issues in Helena, but as far as the leaks go. West Helena um is not nearly where Helena is. There are a variety of reasons for that. One of the things we've talked about doing is now that we're about done on the Helena side is is allowing our Helena crew to go help the West Helena crew so they can do twice as many before the cold, really cold weather gets here. And 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 I'm, you know, Mr. Patterson is here if you want to answer more questions about that. Hiring two, we we hired one additional code officer this week.
Can we go back to the water leaks?
Yes, ma'am.
We have some leaks that, uh, I mean in West Helena or Helena that they repair and then maybe within thirty days or forty days they pop back up. Is there a plan in the future for what we're going to do? Because basically the same street.
It's distracting from the moment. If you if you can't, if you have to have a conversation, take it outside. And then come back here. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Stoves. Thank you.
Is there a plan? A plan for the water leaks that keep popping up? They're getting repaired, but they keep coming back. And I know there's one on, I think it's on Oak, where the old park was.
The owner of LTC has some awesome, they have this awesome one that they fix over here on uh later drive and it is one right back. So it it's a leak. It's leaks all over. So I don't know, you know, what's going on. I I can't really.
Dispatching.
I can't say that.
Ms. Franklin, you're not recognized. And we're not gonna get to the agenda. If you want to be recognized, ask to recognize. Is that something? Mr. Patterson, just if you would be available for questions.
Answer to your question. The infrastructure in this city is very hard, very hard. When you have a leak, that means the water line loses pressure, okay? Once you fix it, this water line regains its water pressure. And water will find the weakest point in the line. And then you got another leak. You got another leak. Stand here and talk to y'all all night about water sewage. But to really understand what this city is going to do as far as water leaks, sewer stations that are going down. The reason that we have bypass pumps is because everything works in a system. This system pumps to this system. This system pumps to this system. It goes to a collection and then it goes to the pump. Now, we got miles and miles of forced mains. We got miles and miles of sewer line water lines run through the city. Once these pipes are put in the ground, they start deteriorating. Mother nature takes over. She eating the outside. This water has chemicals in chlorine especially. Now it's being ate from the inside. And it's just a matter of years before these pipes deteriorate. It's just a matter of years. Now, taking the the owners of this city, I don't know how this is here. I'm not from here, but in my year of being here and understanding both water and sewage. I mean, it was the same thing that, you know, Jack came to y'all with to try to get this stuff straightened out. And I can remember standing here and telling y'all that we in trouble as far as the infrastructure. So this is, we in trouble. But, yes, we do have leaks. We got a lot of leaks. And they gonna keep popping up. Sewer station is gonna keep going down. That's why the mayor came to y'all. We got a grant purposely for water and sewage to get these stations fixed, to get these bypass out of here, because these bypass are expensive. Like two, three hundred dollars a day. And this adds up in a month. And with the the infrastructure that we have.
I just go out there and smoke.
Without the bypass pumps, this city would actually flood with sewage. So we need it right now until we can get these stations fixed, until we can hire contractors to come in and fix these stations one at a time. They can't do them all together. They can't do that. It would cost too much. Yes, ma'am.
Well, actually, uh, Ms. Davis has the floor, so.
My my question, I understand that we've talked several times about several different leaks, but my question is, do we have a plan in place in the for the near future to try to begin repairing some, doing something, fixing this so that we won't reach devastation?
Okay, uh, I believe in one of the zone meetings, uh, the mayor talked to you guys about that and I think he expressed that we did get a loan from the federal government for that infrastructure to get these lines changed up. But still, you gonna have to call a contractor.
You're gonna call who?
Contractor.
Well, my question is, if we got a loan to do these repairs, why has it not, the process has not started? And also, calling like what this Davis was saying, I understand that he stays on that and do this thing. But I think, and I've seen it. Seen a leak repair in this section. And just if if you know, you don't inherit a leak. If you do this much of it, the leak comes back to the same spot. She's not talking about moving. So if you repair it here, why is it coming back to the same spot? Because they're going on the corner of Walk and Avenue, Franklin Street. And it's it's actually a ditch.
Okay, uh, and then what you're talking about, eleven hundred block of Walk, of Franklin, at Walk. It's it's eleven hundred block.
Well, it's just actually it.
That line.
What they can't even put on rocks or something, they soon watch away. So now it's it's the same hole. The leak was never repaired because the water is still there.
The line that grows down Franklin is a two inch PVC line. Since I've been here, when I started in Helena, we fixed it, I know, seven times that I know of.
So when you fix a leak, the water don't go away? The run, you know, like the water that. They don't. That's in the where the leak is. You know, like if the leak is near and when the leak is actually it's a leak, water is coming out of this, so it's making bubbles.
Okay.
Once you fix the leak, uh, the bubble never grows up. Because this water that I'm talking about has never dried up, never been. All they do is they pile some white rocks in it that lasts about a week. And then you got the same, and I'm saying it's literally always a hitch. And it's another thing that I want to run down the floor if I'm a mayor, I don't know. But some of these leaks that they're repairing, they're uncovered and digging up, but they're not recovers because I talked to you about one on her manager, and that's been a month. And it's in the latest yard, but it was on the city's property that y'all repaired the leak, and it still got the hole going on. Yes, I talked to you about that. I know you, that person.
Yeah, in the store. And I related to the supervisor over here in Helena, uh, whether they got told or not. I'm the general manager.
Ms. Carter, can you say where that is again?
That's what I said. That was the street that runs.
Banan, it's with banana, but right there at those duplexes on the corner right before you get to Washington Street. Between where our where First Baptist is and Washington Street. It's a giant hole, and it's a child after passing the folks through there and following the hole. They're gonna be perfect, and that's gonna be on the city because the city will cover it.
And that's on Washington Street?
No, it's between Washington and Banan, they just have Banan. Yeah, it's on Banan Street.
Man's is true. And there's a there's water still leaking.
They they actually fixed that.
But there's a hole is be covered up. Uh, anything else, Ms. Carter? I I just want to make one correction because I don't want to linger. The the federal grant money is the that we're talking about is the Rescue Act funds that we're gonna talk about later in the act that we've already appropriate or later in the night that we've already appropriated. But um, the other issue is a loan that would help replace this piping on a systematic basis. It's probably going to, it's gonna take years because it hasn't been done in years. And it's gonna be too expensive. And in order to do that, you have to have an estimate for what it's gonna cost. And in that special call meeting where we talked about that and the plan that was submitted by Mr. Ross, it was a good Mr. Wallen would do this plan going. it was agreed that Mr. Wyland would do this plan going forward to submit the application. But you have to have the information in order to ask for, you have to know what you're asked for, what it's for, how much it's gonna cost, and so forth. That has not been submitted yet, because that plan has not been completed yet. The plan or the requirement, the product that Mr. Ross submitted hasn't been done. I'm still waiting on vendors to give us prices. Uh, Mr. Patterson can tell you that just because we wanna do it, you approved doing it, doesn't mean we can get the vendors, doesn't mean we can get the parts. Um, it's, it's a different world right now because of the po- post-pandemic world. And I'll let Mr. Patterson adjust that more if you want. But, but everybody in the industry is having a problem getting parts, getting vendors and all of that. To even give you estimates, let alone actually do the work and show up. And that's particularly true in water and sewer, because we've had significant water and sewer issues throughout the country. Because we have infrastructures throughout the country, which is why the federal government just approved an infrastructure bill. And we're, as a country, just now waking up to what the past generations, uh, did for us. But we're something to be done overnight, and.
I understand. Now, you saying that the loan has not been approved.
He's saying we have a loan. Right.
So I need to know.
Well, I, I just, I just clarified before you said it wasn't.
So we don't have a loan?
We have a grant.
No, he said a grant and a loan. He said both of those.
We have a grant, you approved Mr. Wyland to do the loan and the study for the loan. That hasn't been completed, because the vendors haven't finished giving us the cost estimates for the things that we need to replace.
So, Mr. Patterson, why did you think that the loan had been approved? That the loan had been approved? Because, I, you know, and I'm not, I'm not trying to do.
The Zoom meeting that I heard, I think, uh, you guys had discussed, uh, uh, y'all had gave the mayor uh, one point two million.
That was, that was the grant, not the loan. And what they did approve was to go forward with a loan application if Mr. Wyland did the plan. So it was approved to that point, and that's where it is, so. And you can go back and look at the Zoom meetings, it's not like you can't do that, it's a matter of record. Um, and anybody who's watching is more than welcome to do that. I'm, I'm pretty confident, I know what record shows. Uh, any other questions, Miss Carter?
So, eh, for Ms. Davis, either one. So, so basically, you have a plan, but we're not working on it?
Well, you'll have to ask Mr. Wyland that question.
I will have to ask him.
Well, I mean, if you don't want me to answer it, I can tell you Mr. Wyland's working on it, and I can tell you, we've submitted questions to all of the vendors and asked for the prices on these things, and we haven't gotten back yet. And so it's hard to ask for how much we need when we don't know what that is. Um, so that's my answer. But if you don't trust my answer, you can ask Mr. Wyland directly.
Well, I'm really not getting an answer, but thank you, Mr. Patterson.
Well, I mean, the answer is, we don't know what it's gonna cost to do it, because the vendors won't tell us. We don't actually do it. We buy the parts, we pay people to do it. But we don't know what that's gonna cost, because they don't know what it's gonna cost, because half of them are sitting on a container ship in China. Now, that is a specific, an answer you're gonna get, that you can ask as many people as you want, it's still gonna be the same answer. Now, I don't really understand why there's a lot of conflict about this. You said that you, uh, Mr. Franklin said something about the council approving my request. You have, I don't have a problem with y'all. I don't know why you're stirring this pot of conflict. I don't have a problem with the city council. I think the city council has, has, has done its best to try and address these issues. I don't appreciate the, the, the insinuation that, that the water department, that administration is not doing the same thing. We're working our tail off on these issues, and we're trying to play catch up for ten plus years when we didn't do what we should have been doing. So, I appreciate the support y'all have given. I'm not exactly sure why we're arguing. But I could, I could tell you this, I could tell you this, we have a lot of work to do still. And we need to work together as a team, because we all have the same constituents. And those are the, the users of our water and sewer company, and the people that use our water and sewer services. We all have the same constituents, we all need to do this as a team. I'm not exactly sure where the ranker comes from, uh, because as far as I'm concerned, uh, the city council is doing the best you can, and so are we. So while, while we're fighting, I don't know why you, why you yelling.
You think that a fight is because we ask clear questions and want clarity on things? If this is what it was going to go, we approved that, uh, for Mr. Jack Ross. I know it's been a year ago. So, all we have been asking, Mrs. Ford preaches it. If you were doing all this stuff, all you had to do was, this is what we're doing. We're trying to get the people to send us bids. It's like the city council is just out in space. People on the street can come tell us more about what's going on, well, tell me, I don't know about anybody else. Can tell you more about what's going on in the city, then, you know, they ask, asking me questions like, I don't know. How, you know, it's like, you seem afraid that if you bring something and tell us that what's going on, it's like you're trying to hide it. Now, that's my feeling, that's my personal feeling. Because if we approved something over a year ago, nothing has been done. As a mayor, you should have come back and said, well, it's been approved. But we're having difficulties getting vendors, uh, parts, or whatever. It's like you're trying to slide it, slide stuff through. And you keep saying that we're arguing, we're not arguing. If arguing is because we're asking questions, because we're concerned about what's going on in the city with what we have approved. Cause, you know, it might show up one day next month or something, that the one point two million dollars that was approved for water stretch, where we had to borrow two point two, uh, of the one point two millions to do such and such a thing. All we are asking for is what Miss Ford, our paper to read, that's all. We're just asking to be kept in the loop.
And a plane.
Yes, that's all. We're not, there's no arguing, there's no, uh, if, if, like I say, if you consider us arguing is because we're asking questions that we are responsible for. I, I, I don't know why you're doing that, but there's no, I, I haven't heard any conflict about this war. We were asking Mrs., Mr., uh, Patterson questions, and then all of a sudden you went up and deep field, time of was on. And you say a hu- a hun- it was a hundred and twenty days, then you say we, I mean, it's, it's a crisis. So, I mean, it, it seems like it should be something that we should be able to discuss. I'm not here to be confrontational, but it is an issue of need. For the last two years, it has gotten progressively worse. I know over in my ward, I'm assuming the whole city. They're popping up everywhere. So I feel like it's something that we need to bring to the table, not just hit it and keep going, or touch it and then keep going. We need to address it, and that's the purpose. We should be allowed to ask questions.
Of course you're allowed.
And find out.
All I'm asking you to do is to believe my answers. And, and, and I'm, I don't know, now that you're interrupting me, I'm trying to respond to it. The, the leaks are absolutely, all of this is appropriate, and that's why we're discussing it right now. We had special call meetings, and one a year ago. We've had, we've had lots of discussions about this, and we've distributed lots of information about it. And we're currently in an emergency right now that was published. It's, I'm sorry, we have informed you as best we can. If we haven't done a better job, then I'm sorry, we'll try to do a better job.
You said you, it's, uh, we're in a state emergency, and you tried to inform us? How, how did you inform us?
I'll have to go back and, and see what we did. We sent it out to the council, we tried to have.
You sent it to the council?
We tried to have a special call meeting, we might have actually had a meeting, I can't remember. We tried to, I know. And we had a state of emergency issued, and we're still under it.
And you know, man, when you keep saying, we tried to have, it, it makes it seem like, you know, the council's not cooperating, or somebody's not being there. Either we had the meeting, or we didn't have the meeting, but you keep saying, we tried to have the meeting, it's like, well, you all in town.
I, I couldn't talk to something that I wasn't invited to, cause I know, I have no knowledge of what you're talking about.
Well, I mean. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't accuse anybody anything, I just said we tried to have a meeting. And we actually, we actually. Well, you didn't set this on the agenda to discuss the special call meeting we had, but we'll go back and research it. I don't know off the top of my head, but I can tell you this. I can tell you this, I went back and looked, and we're still in the hundred and twenty days. So, um, so it's been, it's been with a hundred, it's been within a hundred and twenty days. I can tell you that. And all I'm saying is, the, the confrontation is, when I say something, and you don't believe me, and you act like I'm not telling you the truth, I'm trying to give you as much information as you want. I can't help it if you don't remember that we did some of these things. But we did a lot of them.
But.
And, and we're, and we've done a whole lot more. And not only that, we don't have to have any meeting for you to be informed of what's going on. You just got through talking about how you've had conversations with Mr. Patterson. So, you can ask Mr. Patterson, you don't have to ask me.
But as, as a mayor.
And you, but you can ask me.
To be more communication.
When's the last time you called me, Mr. Carter?
Why would I call you? You don't have, you don't answer your phone, you don't answer your phone.
You didn't, when's the last time you called me?
You don't answer your phone?
When's the last time you've come to my office?
I called you two or three times, about two weeks ago, and I never got a, a return call or anything.
I never saw, I never saw a message, a voicemail, an email, a text message, or anything else.
You, I don't have your phone, so I can't text you.
Asking for any information about the city, period. Not at all.
Because, man, when, when, when questions are asked to you, and like I said, this is one of the Crockett's personal opinion. Anytime we ask questions that go against what you think should, that you wanna do, if we ask questions for clarity, it seems like you take the defense, you get angry, your voice rises. It's like you start beating the gavel, so they can't about to talk but you. You just keep saying that you, uh, the meeting has to be ran in a certain way. But you get the, you get a chance to sit there and talk fifteen minutes, and then when a question is asked, you wanna move on to something else.
I'm trying to answer your questions right now.
You don't, you don't have answers, just.
I have answers, we, we're in the hundred and twenty days of emergency, you don't wanna accept that answer, but that's the answer.
Okay, but when, when was the hundred and twenty day emergency call? When did you try, as you keep saying, when did you try to have a special call meeting? How did you inform the city council that you were trying to have a special call meeting? I got the, uh, message that the, about the meeting that was supposed to be yesterday, which I was not able to attend, because it was three o'clock in the evening, and I have to be at work at that time. But I have not received anything in the last hundred and twenty days about a special call meeting.
Okay, well, well, we searched that, if you're asking me to send you that information, we'll do that.
I am.
And I don't have a problem at all doing that. Uh, I don't think that's a defensive response at all, but we have done it, we did do it.
Okay, can, and I'm not, can I, did anybody else get a invitation to a special call meeting about the water and sewage in the last hundred and twenty days? Joe, I'mma ask you, cause you get everything. I'mma ask you, cause you get everything. No, I said, did you get a invitation to a special call meeting in the last hundred and twenty days about the water and sewage? Okay, thank you.
The meeting.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the best answer.
So, Miss Crockett, when I send you the proof, when I send you the proof that we did have an attempt to have that meeting, will you apologize? Will you apologize?
No, wait a minute, no, I'm not gonna apologize, because you can't get, you can't get one council member that's sitting at this table to say that they got that invitation. You can go in your office today, right tonight, type up something that said that you sent it out July the twelfth of two thousand and twenty-one. There's no proof, there's no, it's not a paper trail. You cannot prove that you, nobody here has that invitation, so who did you send it to?
Well, he probably referred.
My only question, Miss Frank, you're not recognized. Uh, my only, my only question to you is, when I show you that proof, will you apologize?
How do I know it's proof? That's what I'm trying to say.
So the answer is, you won't apologize.
If you can prove to me that you did it, that you can prove to me that you sent Mr. Ethelton, Ms. Davis, Ms. Ford, Mr. Franklin, Mr. St. Columbia, and myself, something. If you can show me how you sent that, yes, I'll apologize to you. But I wanna see.
We'll get that to you first thing.
Yes.
All right, so, Mr. Franklin, and then Mr. St. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Ever Jane, you're right. It's Ford.
I was just in a situation, uh, as dire with the water. I'd like to request that we have a report monthly at the first meeting of the month regarding the water. We have a written list of the leaks and the repairs that had occurred that month.
Miss Patterson, so who can get that for you?
My first was this, I was trying to help you out, I was trying to save you, because I was trying to, then we did have something on a meeting, where we approved something, but it wasn't no special call meeting, right? So that's, but he probably forgetting, but my thing is this, with, with all, it, it's been so much back and forth, I, I kind of forgot. What I, this is my thing, I, I got it. We approved fifty thousand dollars for, for, so people to come in, former workers who were, know, noticing it back to front. When, when, when I gave, remember me, you was being so kind to each other, you can remember that, cause you said, we, I like, I like when we being so kind to each other, remember, you know?
Well, I just, I like it when we try to work together for the city instead of fight.
But, but.
But I'm not exactly sure what specifically you're talking.
Okay, when I help you out, when, when we gain it, then money will both come flush out the water hydrant. And, and, and we gave some money.
The inspections of our water.
Yeah, so. So, it's a lot of things that this body has.
Now, what about that?
That's when, I, me and you worked out something, you, when these folks came, would flush out these hydrants, I, I gave, as we put fifty thousand dollars. So that the people, the former wa- the former water people used to work here, know these leaks, would come down here on the weekends, on their time to, to, to help y'all get caught up on these leaks. See, I hate to throw Mr. Jones in it, but when Mr. Jones out here, the leak was getting fixed. I can't never talk, you gonna shut me up in a minute anyway.
You just said they weren't fixed in there.
No, 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 okay, well, oh, well, anywhere, but that's. See, see, I, I, I just, anyway, cause we gonna be on that, because my whole thing is.
I remember a meeting we had, had called, called the pumping stations. We had, we had to approve, uh, we, we had to approve the, uh, repairing the pumping zoo. And I remember that, I can't recall if it was a special call meeting or not.
But it has been in the last hundred and twenty days.
But I, I remember we had several meetings, uh, I don't.
In the last hundred and twenty days?
Yeah, we've had several meetings.
In the last hundred and twenty days.
Maybe you and the mayor was there.
Anything else, Miss St. Monday? Anything else? All right, so, um, it's, it's now seven fifteen. Because we've just spent fifteen minutes talking about something where we can prove very easily.
That's our job.
No, it's, it's our job.
It's our job to talk about what's going on in the city, and what we can do to try to make it better for these cells.
And we can easily demonstrate whether or not such a meeting was called or not. But we have a lot of other business to take care of.
But that's on, that's on the agenda.
And it's our responsibility to take care of that business.
Okay, let me ask this question.
Us to be adjourned by eight. Forty-five minutes to take care of two thirds of this agenda.
Who asked you to be adjourned in forty-five minutes?
Minutes about whether we had a meeting, when we can prove that we called the meeting. It doesn't, it doesn't take much difficulty to find out whether we had or tried to have a meeting.
Okay, I'm, I'm past that, I'm, I'm talking about, well, so. I, I wanna ac- I wanna ask this question, since you got a, you got your clock, and you putting everything on task. From now, when you send out the agenda, put, we gonna discuss this ten minutes, we gonna discuss this fifteen minutes. Cause for some reason, if it's on agenda, it don't make a difference if we have to discuss the twenty-five minutes, if we trying to get something to help the citizens. You act like you got the rush and goes to Jerusalem. This is our job to discuss this. If we, if you were more open and communicated more with us about what was going on, we wouldn't have these fifteen minute discussions. But since we don't know, we have to wait till we get here and have the discussion. But if you were more open and sent us stuff that we needed to know about, these discussion, fifteen minute discussions wouldn't be going on.
Uh, we'll continue to try and let you know, make sure you're informed. Uh, we'll continue to try and let you know, make sure you're informed, we'll, we'll try. No, just, just because you, you don't know, doesn't mean I didn't tell you. But we can continue to talk about that, or we can continue to go down our agenda and try to take care of business. With that particular question about whether or not we tried or did schedule a meeting. Okay, Ms. Davis, we're still on your item though.
Okay, we're next, because we, I didn't get answered for the last, next.
We hired a new code enforcement officer, that is, she took, uh, she, I mean, that was her first day, I believe, and we have, and she's very computer, um, efficient. Um, I'm hope, I'm very excited, because I think she's got the skill to get the software that the city's had for many years, actually be used for all these functions. And as we just, were discussing earlier, you have to have a paper trail on these combinations and all the rest of it. And that means you have to enter it properly into the computer, and since, um, Dallas Smith left, we really haven't had that here. So, I'm excited that she's, that she's on, on board. Um, I would rather not discuss names, personnel, personnel names, I'll, I'll, we'll send it to you though.
She is an.
But I, I think she's gonna be working.
Mayor, if she has been hired by the city, that is public information.
And we'll get it to you.
We need, the, the, the citizens need to know who their code enforcers are.
And we'll get it to you.
So, so she's gonna be in the office and doing what Dallas is doing. Who, what about the other person that just want to be in the field?
She actually does want to be in the field also. Um, she's expressed an interest in that also. So, but we, you, but you're right, we also, I don't want to make the mistake of doing the opposite, and having everybody in the office and nobody in the field. What, like, we've had people, a lot of people in the field, not enough people in the office, because they're both equally important, and without one, and the, the field folks send a lot of people in here to get their permits. Uh, they, you know, send a lot of the information and get information to us, but if we don't enter it to that software, or send them the letters, get it to Mr. Valley, so forth and so on, the process doesn't lead to its natural conclusion, so it's, you have to have an equal balance of both. So, I agree with you, Ms. Davis, so I think we're working on that, and I'm excited, maybe we're finally gonna get there. And I know that's really important to you.
It is extremely important, but I would want to hire another officer.
Man.
I would want to hire another officer.
Yes, we've got another open position. And it's on our website.
Can I ask a question? It is on the website.
And if you know anybody, please ask it to them.
Can I ask a, a question, and I don't know if I need to get the legal point, and I know our city attorney is not here, but we do it. What, okay, you, you said that you hired a code enforcement. This goes back to again, of keeping secrets. If, if, okay, if I needed to get in touch with the code enforcer that we have, you won't give us her name?
We'll get you the contact, they just took off.
I, I don't need to be the only one, the people that's listening to this on the radio.
I'll get it to you.
But I'm not the only, only need, the people on the radio need to know.
People who are listening or watching, and you call City Hall, and if they ask for the code officer, we have, we have two people that they can select, and whoever's available is who they'll talk to. And if they're not available, then we'll take your information. And I'm not exactly sure, once again, why this is such a big issue, but we'll get you that contact.
It's public information, mayor, please, please don't let the people listen to you.
Secret, but it doesn't necessarily mean that.
It's public information. If they are hired by the city, they are in, uh, uh, they are city employee, we, I'm not asking you to tell me how much money she making, I'm not telling, I'm not asking you to tell me where she live, all I'm asking for is a name of contact, that's all I'm asking for.
Yeah, she's, she's still getting, uh, emails and phone numbers and all that, so that, we'll try to get that to you in the morning, so that, and we'll also try to put it on our website, I actually, it's already on there, I think. Not the new employee, but, uh, some of the other contact information, and we'll try to update our website so that it will be available, but not all of that stuff has been finished, this is her first day, she's literally just now getting an email.
She has never even signed as a city employee and put on payroll, it's public information. This goes back to you keeping secrets and not, that's what I'm trying to ask you. You the one I want to get the information, so it must be a secret to you.
You're the one saying it, not me.
Because you won't give public information, mayor.
You don't want me to.
This is, this is.
I'm not gonna go talking about employees' business.
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, no, 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 you asked a question, you don't understand why this stuff is so, I don't know what term to use, but since we sat down tonight, every time there's a question that's asked, you appear to give evasive answers to questions that shouldn't be secrets, I mean.
It's not a secret.
But I know it's not a secret, and that's why you should be able to speak her name. She's an employee, her pay is public now. If she's been hired, her rate of pay is, it's in the, it should be in the budget.
Ms. Hav.
And so.
What is the employee's name? It's Mimi, and it's, it's a very long last name. Matoya, Montoya. Okay. Mimi Montoya, Mimi Montoya.
Right, right, but, but.
So.
Mimi Mon, Mimi Montoya.
A lot of time, something.
But we, but we did.
Public information and contact information set up, which should be tomorrow.
But, Mr. Ma.
I'm not exactly sure what's the secret about that.
Ms., Mr. Mayor, the, you made it the big issue, because if you had just spoken her name, everybody wouldn't think that you were trying not to speak her name, and so.
I don't think anybody else was thinking it was a secret, that's my point.
Yeah, when, when somebody says, who's the new employee, and you refuse to give the name, you make it appear as if you don't want to tell people for some reason, that is, is, and it's public information, and everybody knows that, it seems like you're trying not to tell it, and so.
I don't necessarily personally believe outside of directors and maybe deputy directors that we should be discussing personnel by name on airways. I don't think that's something they sign up for.
It's in fact.
That is, that is my opinion, public information. If y'all want to sit here and talk about people all night, you can do that, it's public information. I don't personally think that's a valuable use of our time, it's public information, it's publicly available, but I don't necessarily know why.
You just stated that you had hired a, a code enforcer, this is the first that I heard of it tonight.
Because we just did.
Okay, so, all you should, to me now, this is just me, I think the, the proper way should have been, where you seen that Ms. Davis was asking about these two code enforcers. When she start, first time you said, said, Ms. Davis, we have hired one code enforcer, Ms. so and so, so and so. I think she's gonna be a great access to the city in this manner. But the way that you did it, it was like, if she hadn't asked about the code, we, I guess it would have had, it came out, somebody would say, y'all know you got a new code enforcer?
Actually, I tried to answer that earlier, and we, she wanted to stop with the water leaks. Okay, any other questions about code enforcement officers? That we hired?
Yes.
Mr. Franklin?
You actually could have three, but you only can hire two, right? Because the other position, we froze the money in that position, right? So, I, I think you ought to be, you know, because you go, because you go hire two women, you need to try to hire your mayor. So, what, what you should be asking us, because it's, it's three code enforcement positions. Remember you said, I, I cut the code enforcement, lay it about around the table, voted to, to freeze that phone. Remember that? So, you should be asking, could we open the other code enforcement there, if you could find, uh, somebody who has worked here before, or no code, they can get on top of it. I see that when I talked to you about the fire marshal, I see you said to get a fire marshal too. And so, everything I've asked you about, that, you know, that you really could make the city better, with always to, even to about, I just might be quiet, I'm trying to help you, and, and all you do is, you know, you want to kind of like argue with me. I've tried to help you, because if you go hire, if you need the other position code enforcement, you look like you should say, hey, listen, I've got two people hired, I'm, I may need a mayor, because look what you, the, the way you're doing it, you got another person sitting in the office, because before this, you had the, the Miss Davis ladies doing the permit. That's Miss, Miss Clash and Miss Tyler was doing those permits. Cause Greg, with the way the, with the other code enforcement were doing it. So, there you ought to get you somebody that can go out in the field and help Ms. Davis get her, get, uh, and help Mr. Anthony, Miss Crockett, Miss St. Columbia, Miss Ford, and myself, get these words together. So, we, you know, in, instead you think somebody trying to argue, fight with you, 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 you don't want to be hostile. All I'm trying to do is tell you, like, even with about the water situation, I was trying to ask a question, man, you trying to ask a question, you tell me I wouldn't recognize me, and Madison had, had the option to talk, and I'm the one could help you. But, but.
Well, Ms. Franklin, it's not about, it's, it's, it's whether somebody has the floor or not. And I'm not gonna recognize somebody who wants to help me over somebody else who already has the floor.
That's the one I just said.
That's just why, right, that's, that's just, that's just.
With Miss Crockett was talking.
Franklin, now you're talking over me. That is, that's how you want a meeting, and you try to be fair as best you can, with multiple people that want to have, have something to say. And if somebody else has the floor, then they get to say their piece, even if they're not trying to help me. And then your time will come, and your time has come. But I, I want to take what you said under advisement, that you think we should hire a male.
Well, not on that, because see, I'm gonna catch you right there. Ms. Crockett was talking, Ms. Davis said something, Ms. Crockett went back to talking, Ms. Davis said something. When I said something, you told me I wouldn't recognize, this, this, this Crockett was talking, and Ms. Davis wasn't recognized, but you told me to shut up, and Ms. Crockett was still talking, am I correct, Ms. Davis and Ms. Crockett, did that just happen?
Uh, uh, again, we're, we're talking about, we're talking about process, we're talking about day-to-day operations. We're talking about a lot of things, but what, what, what we're not doing is taking action on anything. Ms. Davis had the floor because she asked for those things to be on the agenda, and that's the reason for that. But I don't have time to sit here and explain everything I do or don't do. But we have to get through our business, because the city has to operate, and there are some things that the city council has to do, that a mayor doesn't do, and those things are on the agenda. And that's what we're trying to get to in a timely manner. So, are there any other questions about the code enforcement officer? If not, Ms. Davis, are you?
I'm done, I'm done.
Okay, we're gonna move on, the city attorney's not here tonight, so we're gonna move on past the, uh, ordinance twenty-eight, thirty, and West Side School Building, I should.
An ordinance thirty.
Until, yes, ma'am, this city attorney is to.
I, I, I read it. I wanted to say that St. Francis Street was left out of that. And when the city attorney and the municipal league representative were, they were on the line, St. Francis Street was mentioned in that, because that is, that one block that is occupied by residents.
The same ordinance, so it would cover St. Francis Street. It would actually cover the entire city. It wouldn't just be those streets specifically. The reason, the reason Arkansas and Pontiac are mentioned is because those are the two streets most often mentioned. But this new ordinance would actually apply to all of our streets in the city, including St. Francis Street. But we'll take that up when Mr. Valley comes to the next meeting, and he, and he can also answer that question for you. Okay.
I was just asking that, that it be included. Then it's, uh, since you specified those two, if you, uh, St. Francis and include that also.
Um, Ms. Ford, as I said, it includes the entire city, if you specifically named those streets only, then you're gonna exclude a lot of other streets that have this problem. So, that, that, that is fine, if that's what you want to do, but I would, I would encourage you to ask Mr. Valley his opinion of that before we move forward on it.
But what?
That's all I would ask you do, is to wait until Mr. Valley can be here to answer questions about including specific name streets.
But, but that's a specific, in this, uh, right, in this, uh, they're too listed, so.
Okay.
That's.
Then, then I would encourage that we ask Mr. Valley his opinion about, ask St. Francis Street too. Um, and I certainly believe St. Francis Street shares the problem. But we have a lot of streets that have these problems. Uh, in addition to ours, up on lock, St. Francis, and I don't want any street to be excluded, it shouldn't, it should be included, with St. Francis and anybody else. Okay, ordinance thirty-six, late bidding on nine five hundred dollar cost for recent construction, it was tabled from November the second. There's an ordinance in the meeting. Again, uh, this is actually something that is covered by the emergency, but, uh, we try to put it on the agenda anyway, because actually, we try to communicate and provide more information than we may actually have to, because I feel like we should err on the side of giving you more information, especially the public, more information. And this is one of those issues. Um, Mr. Patterson, if you want to get up and talk specifically about that project, um, that was on, that was on Sebastian on Highway forty-nine, it was a state highway project, uh, Lee, do you remember that? About, it was a month ago, on our work on that business, Sebastian way on a bad leak, it was an emergency. Very well. So, what, so what, so do y'all have any questions about the expenditure? Or the ordinance?
Uh, we had a, um, a water leak that was under the road, and it required a boring job. So, instead of boring, what a water line was originally, Ed, we moved down to where the, uh, I guess the old Sonic used to be, and we bored across the street. We saved about ninety feet of, uh, water line, and, uh, ran it, uh, ran his water line straight to his business. And we had a contractor come in and do the board.
Any questions? As I said, you've got the estimate, uh, the ordinance. Um, description of the project, so the question for Valley is whether or not we have bidding on on ordinance number thirty-six.
Why are you, you want, why are you being on some of the hard work and done?
I didn't ask for that, it's, it's actually, it was an emergency, so. It's already, it's already been approved according to the audit and legal standard by the state of Arkansas. But in abundance of, uh, trying to provide information, and be the best we can to include the city council, the city clerk, and I thought that it would be wise to give you the option to, uh, prove it, you don't have to. We're in our check anyway. And it will be legal, because, because we're in an emergency. We want the opportunity to do it.
No, but if you say it's an emergency, we, that's wasting time to do something that you gonna do anyway.
Okay, thank you, anybody else? I kind of agree, it is a waste of time, but I wanted to err on the side of letting you know what we did, so. Any other, anybody else?
Right, because we didn't have any, we didn't have information on the last, the next meeting. We didn't have any information on it, street names or anything.
Well, I wasn't at the last meeting, but.
I was talking to Mr. St.
The, uh, the, uh, this is the first meeting where I've, I've had to talk about it, and Mr. Patterson. Mr. Patterson, go ahead.
This is the original line, it runs up under the highway, and then turns and goes to his meter. Where he had a leak up under the road, in the middle of the road. So, instead of, uh, boring up under there and running extra line, we dug up the main, cut it off at the cooperation stop, moved down in front of his truck, across the street, and bored up on it.
That's all, I, I, I don't know what you said to me, but I just need a little bit, you said Sebastian.
Sebastian, um, I'm gonna say Sebastian and Kentucky Fracture, that little brown, really to do.
In that curve right there. Any other, any other comments, questions about the ordinance? Okay, so, questions to prove it, if there's no motion, we'll move on to the next one.
That's all you need.
So, you don't need, that's a waste of time.
Well, I mean, I think my city attorney asked us to do it. Went through the problem of drawing up an ordinance.
He didn't say the city attorney drew this up, he said him and this ramp.
Well, I forgot, Mr. Mr. Valley also wanted to do it. Just to be on, to err, to err on the side of caution, I think would be the app. That's right, it's like, I mean, I'm sorry, I shouldn't, I shouldn't miss it.
Something that we need to do. We're done as an attorney, and. Something that we need to do. We're done as an attorney, okay?
You don't set up the same.
I'm not the city. I'm not the city attorney, so I will not give my, my, my city.
You don't have to vote on it, we don't, I'm gonna write a ticket anyway.
I mean, a- as, as, as a councilman, I'm hearing the mayor saying, I'm doing it anyway because I declared an emergency, so it's, uh, essentially a vain act for us to approve, because he's saying he already has approval, and so, uh.
Well, I'm, I'm, my only point is that it's a legal act, uh, it's an audit-approved act. It's within the law, and it was an emergency, and more importantly than anything else is it served our constituents, and it needed to be done, it needed to be done then, and then we did. And Mr. Patterson and the rest of the crew, uh, and the, the contractors did an excellent job. And I want to thank Mr. Mr. Valley, Ms. Ramsey advised that we bring it up anyway, and I have no objection to that. And it at least allows y'all to know what happened. And so now you do, if you don't want to prove it, it's okay with me. I'm just telling you, you're being advised by your city attorney, who's not present, uh, so I'm not gonna speak for him, but he did advise us that, uh, that we should do it anyway. And that's, those are my words, not his.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance, uh, putting ordinance number thirty-six on third and final reading. I'll make the motion to do it. If they don't want to second it, that's all right.
Ms. Franklin.
I think that's the thing to do.
That's the motion that we, we want to send the thirty-six, right bidding on nine-five-hundred dollars, uh, for recent construction. Um, is there a second? Another second, I failed, thank you. All right, one, um, regarding, um, wave bidding on the landfill equipment, um, I do not have an emergency on landfills, so, uh, this was, uh, emergency though, so I will, uh, this is not exactly the same as situations. For Mr. Jones, you want to come up and address this?
Good evening, Bobby Jones, Public Work Director. I mentioned this to y'all, I think, first part of the year about the Camassu, uh, dump truck. I think I did tell y'all that it was, oh, it was gonna be about seventy-five-hundred dollars, but it went over there to, I think, ten thousand, two-hundred-eighty-six-dollar-and-eighty-three cent. I'm actually jogging way bid on this for a piece of equipment that we really need.
And then when it had to be worked on again in October, the meter reading was ten thousand seven. It's the same piece of equipment, it just keeps breaking down.
But there's no way, the one from August go way back, it got contacted, must tear them.
Well, they were sending the invoices to the wrong department, but we got that straight.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to get clear, I don't know how much money you're trying to ask, because in this, this is like, oh, nineteen thousand dollars.
Yes. One's ten thousand, two-eighty-six, eighty-three, the other one's, and seventy-two, ninety-eight, which both exceed the mayor. Yes, sir. Anything over five thousand's gonna have to come before the council.
The doctor up and running now.
Now, Ms. Ms. Jones, we remind the council the importance of closing the sale. Now, we need the equipment. Once we do that, and Mr. Turner can also address it, the financial issues involved is pretty significant.
I mean, we didn't have a one piece of equipment running at the time, one dump truck, and that was the one moving the wrench.
And so when we close the sale, Mr. Turner, that, what does that mean financially?
They'll release a surety bond that we have with, uh, Ben Coles dogs.
It's reported that we get the sale closed, get on days where we're allowed to operate when the weather's good. We can't afford equipment now, and I'm just add that to it.
Have y'all, have y'all thought of getting another, another one of these trucks?
Oh.
Okay, so this, this is your spare truck?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The pod, and I know you could have no control over there, but on this thousand-dollar bill, the bill that's for ten thousand, what difference is, the labor was seven thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars.
That's right. You know, they might have to go in the engine just to change your O-ring, you know, any little old small part, they don't call it no more than thirty dollars.
That I've just had some equipment worked on, the pod was with seven dollars, the level was four-hundred-and-sixty-five, and I would cry, but, you know, I had to get it back and put it away. Uh, my brother was crying about it then. Parts, what we need bought at six dollars.
So, who we paying traveling expenses in motels?
They coughing a little wrong.
So we have to pay for them?
Yes, ma'am.
Jesus.
Well, they might come here, stay two or three days.
But I'm saying, that's part of their job, that should be part of their, I don't think that we should be paying them for no, but that's just me. Because if my job says that it takes me to do our daily, and then it's, where did they stay? Because evidently, they got the exact same amount for both times, a hundred and sixty-five dollars. Let me be quiet, I'm being a conversation that the mayor said.
One in August, this August was done by someone.
Leadership of Miss Scott.
Now, I said one from Pontiac was under the leadership of Miss Scott.
Yes.
The other one was leadership of Terry McMillan.
It was, it was, they sent it to the wrong person, that, August, that, the landfill.
And also, a lot of the vendors that we get invoices on, they never change the name of the person that they're shipping, sending it to. We're still getting mail with Mr. Gassen's name on it.
Oh, Miss Scott. I think, yeah, I was there at that, yes, ma'am, for the ten thousand. Well, I mean, I don't have to pay them, she got the paper.
So, Miss Scott, if a fool just tipped out.
Yes, ma'am.
She could do that?
Well, she didn't actually approve it, what I'm saying, she got the piece of equipment repaired, because she couldn't get a price at the time.
She had to repair it on quote.
You got to take it to the shop and know if it get the quote. You know, they got to break it down and tell you exactly what they gonna have to do to it.
And I, 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 I'm just asking questions, I'm just asking questions, because people don't want to know this kind of stuff. Like in my car, my phone already. And I just need to know some answers to tell the people that was so kind of both of me. So what you need us to do, Mr. Jones?
Wait, baby.
But, I know we, I know this is a formal, but you saying all of this, uh, if, if we went back, and I'm, I'm just asking a question, so the people that's listening can understand, this work has already been done, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So if we just say, we didn't waive the bidding and all of that, and had to put it out to bid, and it came back that somebody was lower than this, be the purpose of this?
I mean, either way to go, if, if we got somebody to bid, the equipment still will have to go to that person, and, and it's gonna call money to.
I understand, I know that part, I'm saying, if this already been done, we owe these people, not.
Yes, ma'am.
Because the work is done.
Yes, ma'am.
What is the, I know, and I guess it's saying that we need to waive the competitive bidding, because this should have been done prior to the work being done.
Yes, ma'am.
So they're saying that we need to waive the competitive bidding, so that it won't come back saying that we should have bid that job out. Is there, am I, may I can answer? I know you ain't listening at me.
These, these vendors.
Lord Jesus, the man is leaving. What's your questions, probably? This was, so people can listen over here. I see it, this work has already been done, and I'm just trying to figure out, just say, if we sit here tonight and decide not to waive competitive bidding, we already owe this bill, this I bill, because they worked on our stuff. So basically what you're trying, it, it goes back into say, you want us to clean up something that's already been messed up. Because from what I'm understanding, and I might not be understanding right, that's why I'm asking for clarity, this is nothing against you, Mr. Jones. But what is, what it looks like to me is that this should have been brought to us before the repairs were done. So that we could have the option to say that maybe we want to bid it out or whatever, but the work has already been done in the tune of almost nineteen thousand dollars. So now you're asking us to clean this up basically for the audit.
Uh, what I'm saying is, I can't write the check, because I only have a one left to five thousand dollars, that had to be done. Uh, no, it had, it had to be done, because the, the landfill is regulated by both federal, state and federal law. And so there are requirements in the federal state law that we have to follow, just like in the water and sewer department, whether y'all want to follow it or not, I have to. So, we had to get, we had to get, we had to get the equipment fixed, so that we could continue to close the sale, that we're required by law to do, and that was under the recommendation of our individual engineer, uh, primarily, and there was no time to do it. It was, and I'll let Mr. Jones respond to that, if he wants to. Um, but if you don't, if you don't approve it, I just simply can't write the check, that's what it's about.
Wait, ma'am, don't, don't make it seem like it's something that we are doing. If this was, okay, no, no, I'm, I, I got the floor right now, ma'am, come on now, because you, that's how you do people, so you need to respect, deserves respect. My thing, all I'm saying is, in the special call meetings that you try to have, when this was brought, brought to your attention, I personally feel that we should have been notified that we need to have a special call meeting, so that we can approve them going to get these trucks repaired. I, I still have a problem with, you bring me something, that's just like me going, taking my car to Goodyear, and just sit it out there and tell them, just fix, before, if I, if, if they can't tell me what I need to spend, it's like, I'm, we gonna spend this money, because they'll come back and clean it up. Not saying that it did not need to be done, because I believe if they did, it, they need to be done, but all I'm saying is, there's a proper way to do it. We should, like, like you saying, you spot, you were trying to call a special call meeting for the animal control. I feel that the landfill, this should have been a special call meeting to tell us, these trucks need to be fixed. This, and it, it could not have been that important, because we got almost three months between the time that they was repaired. One was, one repairs out seventeenth, the next repairs October the twentieth. So, you can't, you can't say that it was an emergency, because if it was an emergency, it shouldn't have lasted long.
There, there were emergencies, and we didn't know what it was gonna cost till after it was done, because we thought most of it was under warranty. And after the work was done, and some of it was under warranty, and I was able to negotiate the bill downward, because of that, we thought all of it was under warranty, and it was all gonna be covered, but it, it was an emergency and it had to be done. And sometimes, on a day-to-day basis, that's the way things work out. Mr. Jones, you were gonna say something?
You just said it, yeah.
So, it, it, I, I didn't know what it was gonna cost beforehand, because we thought it was all under warranty.
There was no way for them to give you an estimate, even after you got the truck or whatever it was to the people that was gonna repair it of. You telling me that they had to fix it before they could tell you how much it was gonna cost?
No, ma'am, I'm telling you that they had to open it up before they knew exactly what was wrong and what it would cost, and whether it was under warranty or not.
Okay, so once they opened it up and figured out all that, I personally feel that, that's when you should have came, it's up there already. You should have came back and said, well, we need to, don't charge us ten thousand dollars to fix such and such thing, so we need, don't tell them, just, well, you gotta open, fix it, they'll pay for it, because that's what basically sounds like to me.
We thought all of it was covered by warranty.
But you, before they fixed it, you knew that it was not.
No, that's not true, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, now, I did bring this in front of the council, that night you wasn't here, that's why I'm reading you not for me, but, I mean, you can recall that, can't you, Mr. Sandy? Yeah, I did come in front of the council.
Okay, when you brought it in front of the council, did you, you was telling us that it had been fixed, or you were trying to get it?
At the time, they gave totals that'd probably be around about seventy-five-hundred dollars or a little bit more.
And when you brought it before the council, you said I wasn't here. So what was the response of the council?
They, they didn't vote that night, because we didn't have an actual price for it.
Okay, but then, that's, that's my whole, and I'm, and like I said, that's my whole point, you don't go get it fixed and then tell me, you know, if, when they opened it up, you knew that they was gonna give you a price of what it was gonna cost, but your, your logic is, and I, Lord, please don't nobody take it that I'm trying to say that we didn't need it fixed, because we needed it fixed, but it's a proper way to do things. It's, it go, it gonna make it seem like, yeah, the city council just spending money any kind of way, let them do whatever they want to do, and they come back and straighten it out. All you had to do with these special call meetings that you claimed you tried to have, was to call one, to say that the, what this thing is, Camassu is open, they figured out that they got to do such and such a thing, and it's gonna cost such and such a price, and we need to do this right now, because it's gonna cause us a problem at the landfill. Not say the Camassus would, tell them to go and fix it, and then I discuss it with the council. Now, that's, that's me, I don't know how nobody else feel.
That, that all sounds great, except that I didn't know how much it was gonna be, because it was supposedly covered under warranty, and they didn't know either, until they opened it up, looked at it, and they fixed it, and, and then when, then we talked about what was covered by the warranty or not, and they adjusted the bill, that's what actually happened.
Ma'am. I know you, I know you went to school, and I know you went, and I, I, I know you guys does nothing, no. That just because somebody opened it up and said it wasn't needed to be done, you, so basically what you telling us, until they fix it, they couldn't give us no price.
It was gonna be under warranty, we had it.
It, you knew, no, sir, no, sir, no, sir, no, sir.
You just don't want to accept the answer.
That, because that's not an answer. You can't tell me that you took something, I'm not gonna take my car to the dealership thinking it's under warranty, and take, and they start fixing it, and before they tell me, Ms. Crockett, this is not covered under your warranty, Ms. Crockett, you're gonna have to pay for this. No, sir, they are not gonna let, fix the thing, and then tell you that the warranty is not no good. Please don't make me, don't try to make me think, don't try to make it seem like I'm retarded, because I'm not, I went to school to.
It's not a personal vehicle, it's a, it's a large.
It does not make a difference, it's still, warranty is a warranty.
No, ma'am, it does make a difference.
But I, I do want to say this, ma'am, any piece of equipment that break down at the landfill is an emergency. You actually have forty-eight hours to get that equipment back up. If you don't, you got to turn around and then rent some equipment. But by state law out there at the landfill. But by state law out there at the landfill, you've got to get that equipment up in forty-eight hours.
Okay, but you saying forty-eight hours, Mr. Jones, I know, I know you. Can see it from August the seventeen.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
To October the twenty is more than forty-eight hours. Am I, is?
Well, we rent, we actually rented the truck, but I can, I can only speak for the truck during my time.
I'm saying, but you know there's more than forty-eight hours.
Oh, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Okay, I, that's all I'm saying, once they got the truck there, because I know it took more than forty-eight hours to fix. So you can't tell me that they got it fixed unless it's forty-eight hours. Because it took you a day to get it up there, then they had to open it up, then they got to discuss what they got to do with it. And how they saying about parts, not, they probably had to order, but how long was?
Well, it might take longer to fix, I think probably about two months.
Okay, then.
You know, but, but when it break down, we got forty-eight hours to get it to the shop. We got forty-eight hours to report that to A D E Q, any equipment that break down.
Okay, but reporting to, and I'm, like I said, this is nothing against you.
I understand.
All I'm saying is, we just need more clarity about it every week, uh, every time we have a meeting, we got to try to clean up something that's already been spent. And I, it just does not make sense to me. But it, that's just me and I guess.
We don't pay this bill when we have something to break down at the landfill, we won't be able to get it fixed.
I know. I, I'm not saying, I'm not even suggesting we all pay the bill. I'm just trying to get for us to be more open. The way to is pay people, don't do getting up.
Any other questions that? On thirty minutes.
I, I've got a question, if, if, if you were to. Have the thing opened up. They're going to do the work, they're going to be spending a night down here. And if you call, you're going to open it all. Yes, sir, because we're in current, they were going to stay.
And, and, and we're going to have this science situation again. Okay, because anytime a piece of equipment, uh, uh, break down, or in order to, for them to look, give, give us a price on, they got to take to their shop. And bu, uh, open it up to see what they need to do to it.
If you can't, uh, it was over forty-eight hours of us getting an okay on it. Uh. If we got some other people to bid on it, that would incur another cost, am I correct? Or you use the same people and it's under a warranty.
Yes, sir.
I'm trying to justify what you did.
Well, can't nobody else mess with the equipment but the one that.
But the one that did it, otherwise you break the warranty.
Yes, sir.
So you had to have it done.
Yes, sir.
So an expense had to be incurred.
Yes, sir.
Actually, no problem with going on.
And then I, I didn't say that, Joe, all I wanted is to.
I, I understand, you want the mayor to.
I, I just got one more question because I, I might have missed something. You just say that we paying them motive for them to come here.
Yes, ma'am.
But then you say that they have to take the machine wherever they going. So they have to come here and do what when they come here?
Put it on a, uh, they put the computer on to the machine, see, they try the basic part before they remove the equipment.
Let's will the council. Is there a motion?
Place on last, finally, whatever that honest.
This project moves this place on December thirty-nine on third file readings or second.
Mr. Franklin seconded.
Any, uh, any questions or conversation about that, discussion if not called over.
Forward.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
Saint Columbia.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Five yes, one absent.
Is there a motion, I think most passes, is there a motion to, uh, file? Order number thirty-nine, twenty-twenty, an ordinance waiving competitive bidding in accordance with Arkansas code. And takes six fourteen fifty-eight three oh three, authorized the mayor to enter into a contract wave bidding on landfill equipment repair for, for, owned by the city, though unless, however, other related purposes. And this croc moved adoption, I think Mr. Franklin seconded the motion. Any other questions or comments about the motion that not called over?
Saint Columbia.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Etherly, five yes, one absent.
We're saying, we made adoption, emergency clause, one seven thirty-nine, this croc takes motion, any questions or comments about motion?
Franklin.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
Saint Columbia.
Yes.
Five yes, one absent.
Got a couple of things that, that I care a lot about, but I'm a little worried about the time because it's already after eight, I'll stay as long as we need to. But, um, I want to make sure while we have a form that we, uh, maybe it's at the end of your, uh, agenda because it was added late. But it's extremely time sensitive. And it's about IRS settlement agreement, uh, that we have to make a pain on, uh, this week in order to settle it. So, um, I'm going to ask Mr. Turner if you would discuss that. I'm sorry, we're going out of sync, if we can pick up back where we were, but we cannot adjourn tonight or lose a corner without at least discussing this issue and hopefully we'll.
Yes, we had some issues with the IRS, we, um, a lot of. We have some issues with the vendors, we have some vendors that are corporations, we have some that are, uh, sole proprietorships. Uh, some, some, some of the vendors, if you're not a corporation, uh, we need to issue you a ten ninety-nine. Uh, but the only way we would know that is if we, uh, receive a W nine from the, the people we're doing contracts with. So they have to fill out a W nine, if, if it's nobody like A T and two or, uh, Walmart or someone, we know that's a corporation. We should get a W nine from them, uh, the W nine lets us know if that's a corporation or a sole proprietorship. If you're not a corporation, we need to give you a, a ten ninety-nine. So there were some, uh, vendors that we contracted with or we had, uh. Purchased this from services from that we did not. Just give a W, if, we did not receive a W nine from, or, uh, we did not issue a ten ninety-nine. And so it did an audit to try to figure out the ones that we should give ten and a, ten and a, as well as. Well, uh, and the next year what happened was we were, uh, initially signed, I think, seven hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, uh, for the, uh. Withholdings that we should have held for people that were, uh, should have received ten ninety-nines. Now, the majority of those people, the majority of those vendors were actually corporations. So, uh, we went through the files and went through, uh, invoices, uh, and I sent them, uh, a response. Uh, indicating which, uh, what goods and services we purchased from those particular vendors. Uh, which ones were corporations, which ones were, uh, sole proprietorships and so on. Uh, there were a handful of the ones that we, uh, probably should have given a ten ninety-nine to that we did not. But after speaking with the, uh. IRS agent, uh, over the last couple of months, what they decided to do was, uh, not, uh, charge us for the withholdings that we owed on those, uh, vendors that we did not issue a ten ninety-nine for. And they just decided to, uh. Give us a penalty, uh, instead of, uh, charging us for the withholding. So, uh, we, I, I managed to get it down from seven hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars down to thirty-six thousand dollars. Uh, but they, they want us to, to get that money to them as soon as possible. And so that's why we need, uh, the city council to approve that, uh, the payment to the IRS for that, uh, particular issue. They, uh, they said they, that, that will resolve the issue, this was twenty eighteen. Uh, they said they wouldn't worry about anything from twenty nineteen, twenty, twenty, twenty-one. And then from now on, uh, from this point on, uh, any, anyone that we know for sure that's not a corporation, we should issue, uh, we should get a, a W nine from them to make sure. Uh, they're corporations, so, whatever, and, uh, those that aren't corporations, we should issue a ten ninety-nine to. So, now the issue has been resolved except for the payment of the penalty to the IRS. Thank you, that is thirty-six thousand dollars. They closed the, the case on the tenth.
Of November?
Yes. I got the, uh, response from the IRS agent. That Thursday, uh, I discussed it with, um. The mayor and the clerk. My suggestion was to go and pay it. They offered us, uh, opportunity to get the, the penalty, probably reduce the agency, it, it probably wasn't going to, they, you know, they weren't, probably weren't going to do it. And my suggestion was, since we got it down from seven hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, just go, and, and they're not going to do anything going forward, best thing to do is just go and pay it. And, but he didn't give me, he just said as soon as possible, he didn't, he didn't give me a exact date.
You know, seven sixty-six, thirty-six?
Yes.
Well. Mr. Turner, Mr. Sandy, what do we need to, in the council order to prove that? Check. Prove that suspension with IRS to lock down settlement. Essentially saves the city about seven hundred thousand dollars to, so we send the checks, sign the paperwork and send to them.
The attorney gets that, we have to do an ordinance for to clean it.
I think you could make a, have them make a motion to pay it. And then if the city attorney recommends that we do an ordinance when he returns for the next meeting, we could do it then or to, if it was a paper trails needed. But with IRS, I don't think it's going to be such an issue.
Could, could we, could we not appropriate or approve the settlement tonight pending, pending, pending? So that we can inform the IRS that the council approved it?
Yes, please.
And then we can, and then the council can do whatever else Mr. Valley recommends.
And, uh, that was one of the reasons why he didn't give me a, a specific date because he knew that we had to come before the council and, uh, get an approval for the council. So it, it wasn't immediate, but they, they want us to do it as soon as possible.
Other questions, uh, Ms. Turner? About this matter? So what? To, to say it a third time. Ramsey, Mr. Turner saying is, if we can get appropriations, which is a resolution, it can be done verbally tonight by the council and we can let the IRS know. That we've made that approval, he can let his supervisor know. And we can, I always hope, uh, pending Mr. Valley's advice about what we need to do on our side of things, but IRS doesn't really care about that. They just want to check and sign the agreement for the city so they can put this away. And the sooner we do that, the sooner we're going to, uh. You know, lock down an agreement that saves us seven hundred thousand dollars. So I think an appropriation would be advisable because it shows that we're making some forward progress and whatever Mr. Valley says. So anyway, is there a motion to, is it thirty-six even? There's Saint Columbia approves appropriation of thirty-six thousand dollars to settle twenty eighteen IRS tax audit. Pending. And what would you say, pending what?
Our attorney.
Pending approval by the, the city attorney, and Ms. Crockett, did you second that motion? Any questions or comments about the motion? If not called over.
I'm sorry. Writing or, what did she say, resolution or something, what did she say?
If Mr. Valley wants us to do an ordinance, we'll get him to prepare one and get that back to you.
Okay, we have something anyway, just so that we.
Yes, ma'am.
Have something on record as to what we did.
Yes, ma'am.
Since we don't have anything.
Yes, ma'am.
Good point, any other questions or comments about the motion? If not called over.
Davis.
Yes.
Saint Columbia.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Five yes, one absent.
Most paths, thank you. Alright, so we'll go, we'll start the form, if y'all willing, we'll still, we'll go back up the agenda to, um. Order number forty, wave bidding for two new ser, or for new service for computers to second quarters in the packet. It was tabled, as I understand it, because the equation was, had, uh, been allowed to, or gotten estimates. And so that information is in your packet that you requested at the last meeting. What it shows on here, um.
This is the same company.
What, what we do with V C three is municipal company or a company that serves municipalities that does that bidding for us. They go out and get bids from other vendors. That's, that's basically what they do, one of the things that they do for cities is an I T solution that they do for municipalities. So they did get, and that's what's included in your packet and, um, you'll see that, uh, they're different prices. And so they did do that, I think your question at last meeting, I understand it was, were there other bids or were there, I don't know if bid is the right word, were there other estimates provided?
Who is the other?
The answer is yes, they did seek other and that's. It's in your packet.
Who is?
V C three is the company that works for the city that gets the, that gets. Dell and, um. Uh, C R W.
And you said V C three works for the city.
That's the vendor that handles our I T, that's right. So they go out and get invoices and estimates for us.
So we got a contract with V C three?
Uh, that's contract, you're not, uh, what it is.
Okay.
But we did, we did use them as a service, that's right.
What I'm saying, that, whatever we paying them, it must not be over your spending limit.
I'm sorry.
Whatever we paying, V C three must not be over your spending limit. Because it has not been, uh, put before us to, uh. To pay a, a contract.
V C, uh, V C three is a vendor that submits services, kind of, it serves. Invoices for services, just like a A T T bill or any other thing like that.
They don't do it for free?
No.
They get paid.
And if they send this to bill, it's over five thousand dollars, I'll bring it to you.
But, okay, but.
But right now before you is the question about this particular issue. And. Uh, if, but if, if I get a bill from V C three, it's over five thousand dollars, we will definitely bring it to you.
Who, who offers you to hire V C three to do anything for the city? That's what I'm saying, you, 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 so you just, so this is what you tell.
The voters of the city did, when they elected me, because that's my job.
But it's, it's not your job to have no contractors and spend no money that you have not been approved to spend.
It, it's.
That's not your job, that's our job.
You don't, you don't approve evidence picture.
If it's over five thousand.
You might want to, but you don't.
If it's over five, no, you're right, we don't because you know what you want to.
The city if we did and we.
You're right, because you know what you want, but this is a contract with someone.
Contract.
It's not?
No.
What is it?
But that's not the issue before the council.
I don't know.
The issue for the council is whether or not to upgrade our, uh, very old outdated servers, which are subject to being hacked and with ransomware. O C O L got hacked and they had to pay fifty thousand dollars to.
May, I say city council?
Because they had outdated servers and software. Um, we have mismatched and outdated software and servers and no longer are supported by the companies that, uh, when they were purchased. Uh, so this is a much needed updating, upgrading of. So this is a much needed updating, upgrading of our information technology. Computer system in the city. And if we don't approve it, we leave open and vulnerable all of the public information, the city, the social security numbers, the driver's license, birthdays, names of all the people in our databases for the city becomes vulnerable to be attacked and hacked by outsiders. VC three's job is to get us the best deal. And they debt for cities all over the southeast. So that's the question for you.
Okay, you said that we have two different vendors here. Could you tell me the name of the vendors? Cause I don't see no name of the vendors. I said you go purchase some equipment, some Dell equipment. I don't see anything because both of these invoices have the same account manager. This, and they came from the same place. I don't see where it says that Dell will, it would be provided by Dell is the this is saying that you're purchasing the equipment as VC three will be purchasing this equipment to upgrade and stuff. I don't see any different vendors. And I see on these contracts that, what's the difference in them? There, one is offering more than the other, so.
VC three is the
I understand, I don't know, ma'am. I'm just trying to see who the vendors are. Cause I don't see anyone that says Dell.
I'm trying to answer you. I've already answered it once. Dell and CRW are the, are the major vendors that they reached out to for estimates.
Okay, so why do we have something from them?
Question, and you keep interrupting the talking over me. VC three is the company that gets those estimates for us to try and get us the best deal that we can get. And that's what they do. They are the vendor who gets the estimates. They got the estimates and you have two of them before you. The one they recommend is the one that they think fits our needs the best. They know more about our information technology, computers than I do. And probably most of us do. And so we use experts who have a little bit more knowledge and also have insurance and other things in case they are incorrect that we can fall back on. If we do get some kind of a data breach after we use their services, then they're liable if they recommend things that we do and they don't work out as they say. If you do what I tell you to do on IT, it's very likely to be a mistake because I don't know enough about it. So what VC three does is advise the city on our IT needs. And what we desperately need right now, according to them, is to update our servers and our equipment so that we can be safe and secure and our citizens and their data and information will not be hacked. And so we will not be targeted by ransomware and other attacks. Our equipment is extremely outdated. They're no longer protected. VC three's job is to use the best deal. These are the two best deals that they Okay. Last meeting, you asked for what they had submitted. This is what they submitted.
Okay, it maybe, and I, I, I guess my mind is moving too fast or something. If Dell sent VC three a invoice or a estimate, why does it not have Dell at the top submitted by VC three to us? But we, I wanna see the bid that came from Dell. I wanna see something that Dell sent VC three. I wanna see something that these other people sent VC three. This is, cause when I look at this, this is like VC three is going out and purchasing some stuff. They're not saying that Dell gave them this. It shows no way on him that this is an estimate from Dell. It says this is a quote from VC three. And I'm not, I guess if you can talk fast and make people think that we, we are the one that's being, but it's like you're trying to push stuff on us. We asked in the last meeting for the, the bids from the different companies. There's no way you should have brought us back something that had the same name, same account manager. Nothing that shows that the quote came from Dell. All of this shows that this came from VC three.
That's what you asked for.
No, it's not. This is what you gave us. This is not what we asked for.
Well, I couldn't give you something that we don't have.
So they didn't send you anything from Dell showing how much Dell's gonna charge?
That's
You just go on with what they said.
It's in your package.
No, it's not.
That's, we're afraid that it is. It's just, you're seeing, you're seeing it differently. I understand that. But I'm trying to explain to you why it's the company that bids it for us. And so you have two estimates.
But when they bid it, they don't, the, the bid that they get, that comes back in does not say VC three. It says Dell to them. So they should have gave you something that showed that this is the bid that Dell sent to us. This is the bid that whoever, whoever else this other person as well sent to us. And these are our suggestions. Not an invoice with a, a quote on it from VC three.
So what you're requesting is something that says CRW and Dell on it instead of VC three?
Something, whoever submitted the bids.
Any other questions?
What is CRW? What is it? The name of the?
It's the other vendor that, that was reached out to.
Cause it's not on there anywhere.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
It's my understanding that OCLA Arkansas failed to upgrade, update their computer systems like you're trying to do. My understanding.
Yes, sir.
They got hacked up there. They cost them a lot of money. This company, as I understand it, is the company that works with Dell. Is that right? That gets the bids?
No, he said nothing. We will do, miss them.
Well, it depends on what you mean by work with them. Yeah, they get the bids from Dell.
Yeah.
Or the estimates.
There's nothing, there's nothing, I don't see anything illegal about that.
Joe, show, who, who does, when you look at that, who do you think that bid came from?
Well, it came from VC three.
Okay, we asked for two people to submit bids. They submitted us some information. He said these two different companies. What, what, what both of your invoices say?
Well, I don't have the other one in front of me, but we had it last week.
And both of them said VC three. I'm asking for, I'm not saying that we don't need, all I'm asking for is to show me, cause to me, this is like he not ready to have VC three. So this invoice is to me is saying that when I'll give the, y'all approve this, saying that VC three is gonna be the one doing the work. It shows nowhere that Dell or nobody else is gonna do the work or supply the stuff. Now that's all I'm asking. And I'm not saying now, Tony, I don't need a computer because we, we discussed that last hour. All I'm, once again, all I want is some clarity. And I see that on this agenda now that I see it. It was supposed to be brought about by that pothole that we, and that of what we paying for that dumpster was supposed to be put on this agenda and it ain't on there. But how this stuff we, forty-eight hundred dollars a haul? For somebody to spread.
Okay, on this ordinance, any other questions? So the question for the council is ordinance to way bidding, you know, they did get, did get the estimates in order to allow the city to update its servers. No motion?
Ordinance, ordinance supporting.
This, St. Columbia.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion. Order supporting on the third final reading.
What were you? I'm just saying, what, what, what are you, what, what, what are the, what are your quotes?
Then we, then we Ms. Crockett, Ms. Crockett. We got most, with the motion on the floor, Ms. Crockett. There's procedure that we follow. There's a motion on the floor. We'll see if there's a second. If there is, then, then you'll be recognized.
I'll make the motion.
There's a motion by Mr. St. Columbia, but ordinance number forty dash twenty-two-one on third and final reading. Is there a second? Uh, some more time. Motion tells for lack of a second, so we will ask VC three to go get invoices that say are CRW and Dell and bring that back up at the next meeting. Way bidding for animal control containment complex. This has been on the agenda also for several months almost now. This is a supply chain issue. It's about eight thousand, is it in here? Eight thousand? There's an ordinance to, on the animal ordinance forty-one, way bidding for animal control containment.
I may have inadvertently left it off this time. Well, I, I, I guess I got my agendas mixed up, but I had put it on the agenda. I guess I didn't get that, that agenda to them or but then I put it on there.
I got the ordinance, but I don't have it on my agenda.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm sure it's not on your agenda, but you have your ordinance. Anybody else not have the ordinance, not have it on their agenda?
It's on your agenda. You got an ordinance for the one, but it's not on the agenda.
Forty-one dash twenty-four.
Cause I don't have, I've given all my forty-ones away.
It's the
Give it to us last time?
It's, it's been on the agenda for a while. We have, we discussed dog bites, dog attacks.
This is something you just called, you called me.
We, we was on the agenda for the special call meeting, lost some other issues. And this is one actually has been on the, on the agenda for months. We just haven't gotten to it because of other issues. But essentially it's over my spending limit. It's about eight thousand dollars. It's a supply chain issue. We need a containment structure to place the dogs. We have to have a place to put the dogs. We haven't had a place to put dogs since about, I think since I've been mayor, if not before. Actually, the city hadn't had a place in many, many years to, to put animals. We need to spend money on a few other things too in order to do that. But we desperately need an animal containment structure. And so what this would do is we actually sent people out and we've been trying for a year just to order something. And because of the spontaneous issues, we weren't successful in being able to place any orders. Finally, Chief Smith and Chief Mattfield just got in their car and started driving and they finally found a place down in almost Monticello, I think. Palm Bluff area. And, and, and they can get it here, I think, no later than February, but it's over my spending limit. So that's why it's on the agenda and why there's an ordinance. So how do you want to proceed on that? Without it, right now, we have and have not had for some time, any place to put the animals that are on the streets that are biting people and attacking people. And we can't pick them up if we can't put them somewhere. And we can't put them somewhere because we don't have a place to put them. And we haven't had a place, like I said, for many, many years.
So who was trying to give money to the animal shelter for, we didn't have a way to put no dogs and cats and monsters?
I'm not sure what your question is.
Why were we trying to give money to the animal shelter if we did not have a place to put dog?
So we would have a place to put dogs.
So you saying it's been years, they just closed the animal shelter?
You know, and they stopped taking our dogs a long time ago because we would not, for a lot of reasons. But one of which was that we didn't pay them to take their dogs. I've said before recently that, and I've told them many times, they had to have audits. They had to agree to go by state law and local ordinances. And if they couldn't do that and took those boxes off, and the most recent conversation was about private money that was gonna do that on out of half as sort of pile prizes to see if they would do it. And, and that was rejected. So that's a whole big discussion, but that's the specific answer to your question. But essentially we need a containment structure to put the dogs. And, and we can get called out and we can, we only have four darts. Because it's about an eight or nine month delay to get darts here. That's true all over the country. So we have four. We don't wanna use them, but we certainly don't wanna use them. All we're gonna do is let them wake up and attack somebody else. So we need a place to put these dogs that are attacking people. And
Well, I'm trying to sit on this about these dogs that people supposed to have permits and all of this kind of stuff without why we're not enforcing it?
Well, again, we don't have a place to put them if they don't do it. We also need a better animal, so funded program, which is what the meeting was about.
You, nah.
It was gonna be
I don't know if nobody else remembered this, but you say that that's why the man and co was getting paid extra money because he was the dog of the, what you call, animal control.
Yeah, well, so what's your question?
So what happened today?
Nothing happened to that.
So he was just getting paid extra money and stealing it?
No, that's, that's what you're saying. That's your accusation, but absolutely no truth.
You didn't say that.
He's being paid as animal control. Are there a lot of things you do with animals such as taking back to their owners and telling them to put them back up? Finding people, we have found them. He's done that. We've had to put, take dogs and put them down at the vet who were suspected of being rabies, having rabies. He cleans dogs up off the street on the weekends. He does a lot of things that only an animal control officer or mostly a licensed one can do who's trained. And he is, and he does that after hours in the weekends and during the day. In addition to his other duties. So I'm not exactly sure what your question is again, other than just to make racist allegations.
No, you, you are always trying to say that because that's, that's, that's something you wanna do. All I'm asking you is just be clear about, you made the statement over the air that he was getting paid X amount of more money because he was getting, he was animal control. All I'm asking you to do is explain it to the people. All you had to do was give the explanation that you just gave that he took them to the vet, he cleaned them up and all that. That's all you had to do so that the people will know why he's getting paid the extra money. You're the one making allegations because you feel like you're being threatened because
What's my allegation?
That you, you feel like that we are trying, that we're being confrontational with you when all, while we're doing is asking questions. That's all you had to say. The last remark of it that you made was not necessary.
Do you think you're not being confrontational?
No, I, I'm, I'm asking questions. And if that's being confrontational, I, I am being confrontational. If, if asking questions about what's going on with the city's money is being confrontational, yes, sir, I am being confrontational.
And if I answer your questions, is that confrontation?
You're not giving us answers to that.
I just answered your question.
You answered that part, but the last remark that you made was not necessary. It makes this, makes it seem like we're fighting against you because I'm asking question. And Mr. Turner, I have a question for you. I think we had this discussion before. How is it that the code enforces being paid out of two parts? Why, well, no, I didn't, I shouldn't say how. I should say why.
I, I think proper accounting would allow for whatever function that you're doing to be charged at that particular
But how do you, I thought at one time they couldn't have two different jobs for the city.
It's not two different jobs.
It has to be two different jobs. He getting paid out to them parts.
It's not two different parts. They've been, he's been paid
He getting paid out of code, he getting paid out of street service, uh, whatever you, stuff you
Those are two different departments, the departments are
He been paid out of all of them.
But the department is classified by function. The, all the money is coming from general fund. And so you can classify whatever function that you're doing, that's the part you should be paid for. It's no different than you have some people who, when they hire, when they're hired, they're hired in the street department or they're hired in sanitation department. But you do have some people who do sanitation functions and you have some people that do street functions.
My, and the only reason that I have this question, I remember that we had some people that were working in the water department. They were reading meters and they were also firemen, policemen, but they could not be paid out of two different sets of monies. They had, at that time, what had to happen was if they were going to continue to read meters, they had to go to the temporary service so that they would not be paid at, directly out of general funds out of two different parts. That's, that's the only reason. So that they would not be paid out directly out of general funds out of two different pots. That's, that's the only reason I'm asking.
But if they were working for the water department, they were being paid from the water department. If they were working for, for the fire department, they would be paid out of general fund. That's two different.
Okay, that's two different things, but they did not allow them to do that.
But the code and the street.
Are two different things.
They're the same. They're general funds. It's, it's the same as when Mr. Womack was, uh, working at swimming pool. So he's in the street department where he was getting paid, and he worked for the street department, he was paid from the street department. He was paid when he was doing, working at a swimming pool as a lifeguard, he was getting paid from parks and recreation.
We don't even have parks and recreation. I don't know where he was getting paid.
Then when he, but we haven't had a swim, I mean, but when he was, when we had the parks.
No, he, he, he's been, the park has been open since park and recreation has been, uh, but I'm going to leave that alone. Cause it seems like that, and not you and that, but it seems like if we're asked, come on, what's next?
I mean, all I'm saying, Mr. Crockett, is that that is proper accounting. When, when you, 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 you should be paid, you should be, you should be classified according to the function. If he's working in code enforcement, he should, when he's doing the code and function, do, uh, code enforcement duties, he should be paid in code enforcement. When he's doing street duties, he should be paid out of street. Those are all, uh, general funds.
So this, I have, okay, now.
And, and like I said, well, we did have a parks and recreation department.
But when, when he does, he can't do both jobs at the same time.
No.
So what happens then is when he goes out on the weekend, it ends up being overtime, right?
Yes.
I just don't see. You don't have nobody in your department. Didn't you ask the people that do the dogs and wash them and stuff like that? That's where they get paid from. He gets paid out your money.
I mean, okay, we have two, and we have employees now that are paid in district court and paid in police.
I understand all of that. That's, that's not my, what I'm saying is. He has a set salary to do, his salary included the money for the animal control. Now, he gets his salary for five days a week, uh, eight, ten days, eight hours of payday. Then he gets overtime for something that he's been paid for in his basic salary. Do not anybody understand what I'm saying? He's getting his money for animal control in his eight hours a week because it was in his salary. Am I not right?
Yes.
Then he goes and gets overtime on the weekend that's from something else. So what do you base the overtime on if it's a different, if he get paid out of a different department?
Yeah, no, 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 I gave B forty-one number, maybe he can do some.
But.
So they.
It's a different function.
It's a different function, but you already, that was already included in your salary. So why are you getting paid overtime to go out and do something that was included in your eight hour of, of pay period?
He's, okay, the federal law, if he's not making, he's not making the minimum requirement for you to be an exempt employee. If you're not an exempt.
I'm not tired.
But if you're not an exempt employee.
I understand all of it, Mr. Turner. All I'm saying is, is how do you say that I'm paying you thirty thousand dollars to be the code enforcer in animal control? That means that that consists of the, you're supposed to be able to do both of these in that eight hours if that's your basic salary. Because to me, if, if that was not going to be included, included in the salary, it should have been where you going to get twenty-eight thousand here and then you do your overtime. Because it's like he's, it's guaranteeing him overtime because he has to do eight hours as a code enforcer. And then he's going to do how many ever hours on the weekend. That's, it, it, it doesn't make sense.
Well, as. Just interrupt for a minute. We're off the subject. The subject is animal containment structure. We're going off back to. And all that. I will be quick to tell you that even though a foundation pays the grant for Mr. Womack. It comes out of the city's general fund for a different function. We also still have.
You said we was through with that. You said it wasn't on the agenda. Let's go back to the agenda.
I've tried to, to correct some.
No, don't correct it to it. I asked that it be put on the agenda for the next meeting so we can discuss it then. Thank you.
Ms. Crockett.
It's Mr. Smith.
You also have firemen who are still working at the water department and still being paid out of two different funds. So I think you're left with the impression somehow, but that's not the case anymore, but it is the case. So that, that occurs regularly throughout the city. Are the issues, the animal containment structure, do y'all want to do this or not? Do you want a place to put our dogs that are rambling on the streets that we can't get put back up? That are biting people or not? It's up to you. There's already, there's already appropriation in the budget for it. What you have to do is just prove the expenditure because it's over my spending limit.
So who going to get the dogs and put them up if we get destructions?
I'm sorry?
Who's going to be responsible for going out if I call you and say the dog in my yard been attacked, my little children? Who will be responsible for coming out to get the dog and take him to destruction?
And, and until, until someone. Until someone else is proper, if it requires somebody who is trained and licensed by the state of Arkansas, it will be the one person we have who works for the city who is so trained.
So what happens?
And that person is currently our code enforcement officer and animal control personnel officer, and it will continue to be that until we can find two or get two other people. What we were going to talk about yesterday was creating two new positions for animal control, funding them. And getting them certified so that we could have a true animal control program here once and for all, after many, many years. Of relying on an outside entity that didn't, didn't work out, no finger pointing, but it just didn't work out. And we still have the problem of dogs on our streets biting people. And it's still our responsibility to do, to do something about it. So.
Where would it be at?
Where would the containment structures? Right now, the only place that, that I'm sure we could, could put it is Landfoot. I'm hoping we can find a better place. The county also voted the other night to give us the so-called county facility that's located out there. We were going to talk about that at the meeting also. But, um, but this particular containment facility, uh, right now, if nothing else changes, it would probably be located at.
So we got a room out there to house dogs at Landfoot?
Yes, ma'am. So, um, again, we, we had scheduled a meeting yesterday to have a longer conversation just on this issue. But for now, it's getting late. I need to know what, what the council's pleasure is on this particular item before we move on. Or this forty-one. Is there a motion to approve ordinance forty-one to Wade Benny for animal control containment complex? The status moves adoption ordinance forty-one. Uh, is there a second? I'm just thinking of you saying it's the motion. Uh, any other comments, you know, questions or comments about the motion to put order seven forty-one? On the. Second, third, our final rating, so as I get your address right. If not, call him.
Uh, yes.
Thank Columbia.
Yeah.
Crockett. Franklin. Forward.
Abstain.
I have two yes, one absent and three, and three extensions.
Motion fails. All right, next item on the agenda is. Pandemic incentive resolution packs, Mr. Franklin, you're.
Uh, this resolution has been explained. Miss saying, what's the resolution number? Uh, I moved, we, uh, adopt resolution number fourteen.
Can you tell us what it is?
They got the information of it, Mr. Mayor. You already, you already explained to it. So I got resolution number fourteen of, uh, so. I got a second.
Mr. Franklin moves adopts resolution number fourteen twenty-two one. Just crock it seconds the motion. Any comments or questions about the motion? I, I have a question. What's the cost of this motion?
Uh, you got, you got to hand out and cough.
What is the basis for that call? How did, how did you arrive at that?
You, uh, this, uh.
What the resolution says, this is going to cost.
We, we could go ahead and cough.
What, what resolution says is that it will.
Yeah.
It will cost the cities. I have a question, Mr. Franklin.
Well, you need to do a presentation. I'm ready to vote.
But it's your resolution.
Yeah, okay.
And it's in your name and you made the motion.
Okay.
And in it, it asks for six hundred and thirty thousand dollars in premium pay. And also would ask for an additional. Fifty-five thousand dollars. So where did you write those numbers and what are they for?
Yes. Yes.
Yes, is your answer?
Yes, yes, that's my vote. Yes, let's go. You have no, you have, hey, let's just, we, you talk later. I got to get this, we got to do what we got to do. Call for the vote so we.
So you're going to ask questions when I.
I had said that to you. I've been quiet just to get you one, but I would give what I, I would give these employees.
I just, I want to know.
You.
And Mr. Turner can answer it as well. So Mr. Turner gave you the, the information to put into the resolution. Is that, is that your answer?
Oh, no, I, I, it's in there.
Uh, Mr. Franklin.
Where did you get the number?
No, the appropriations have changed. I, I have a different resolution with the appropriations change. What's it? I, I, I just, I have it on my computer. I didn't print it out for you. I just, so, so this crack, I sent everybody some additional information earlier, telling them, the people that had email. And that's why I gave it to you, you know, letting you guys know that this is, this, these appropriations are different than the ones that are in the, in the resolution. I have corrected it in the resolution. I just didn't see your copy of the.
So you corrected, it's corrected right here?
No, I can print it out and give you a correct.
Okay, well, I want to move that the resolution, what, what, we say resistance and rights?
Yes, at this time.
Well, I'm, I'm admitting that, uh, motion with the, with the necessary correction, Mr. Turner, can I get the second, Mr.? Yeah, I, I just admitted his corrections.
Mr. Turner just stated that the numbers in the resolution were inaccurate. So what is your amendment? So Mr. Franklin would like to replace his original motion with another motion to adopt resolution fourteen as amended. How is it amended?
Mr. Turner got it. Well, and Mr. Let, and you can fix that later. Let's just go ahead and vote. The matter, I want, when the car broke, both Mr. Red, we, we fix what he.
I think we need to know.
We, we can get it fixed when he get back. Come on. It's getting late. I mean, come on, we're saying can you call for the vote?
Well, no, Mr. Senior can't call for the vote.
We do discuss it. That's the, the body has no discussion. You can't vote.
So you're gonna, you're, I can vote. You're gonna approve a resolution.
Whatever is in that resolution. You trying to put me on blast. Hush now, little child, and let's vote.
So you don't know how much.
I know what's in there. You trying to give me the same. They, they, like you just, they'll move these other folk. They can come down to city hall and read it, but right now it's on the table.
But you don't want to tell them publicly what you send your resolution.
You ain't want, you, and you didn't want to tell how, how these folks are, how they even spend this money. But we got, we got to wait till you get a, a, a number. How much you spent on the water department? Yeah, how much is thrown out that river park?
Does your resolution appropriate?
You, I ain't got answer you.
Do you know the answer?
Yeah, I know the answer. You ain't going to get me the answer to guess where I'm going, whatever, if they want to see it coming off.
Trying to hold a secret from the public?
Only secret I got, only, you know, secret I got.
Is it a secret?
And I should have ran from there and studied.
Is it a secret?
Not a secret. They can read. Come on, only two dollars.
Then you don't know how much this resolution is going to score. What you're saying, Mr. Franklin, is you made a motion to approve a resolution. You don't know how much it could spend or cost the cities. That's what you're saying. Yes or no?
It's, hey, can you open that door and see if Mr. Turner down coming? Cause I ain't got answer to this question. And it failed, it failed. Okay, then can you call for the vote? Yeah, whatever you say.
You're making a motion.
Whatever you say, Kevin Smith, they know what it is. And you, did you ask Clark calling that when you moved up the city hall? When you moved police department out to the county, we ain't be moving there, we started paying money. Okay, then don't you ask me no question. No, I proved nothing. Cause I voted no. I ain't voting. And you started wasting money. You need to tell them how you built that. You got the all this stuff to do in the river park. So you had.
First of all, all that's untrue, but has it got anything to do with the resolution where you're trying to spend?
Sure do.
Almost seven hundred thousand dollars?
Well, okay, well, if it happened, it, it, it's, it's going to happen.
I don't know.
Oh, well, I don't either.
You can't tell me how much it's going to cost.
Who are you? You don't question me.
And you're on Zoom and you're on radio, and I think you are the public explanation of why you don't know how much.
Call me eight seven zero seven seven forty-one. Call. I'm not subscribing to the paper. I'm not subscribing to KJW. So you are, they go.
While Mr. Turner passes out a copy of a new resolution with the accurate amount, can you tell me what this money is to be spent?
You, you can read. You can.
I'm asking you to your resolution.
I can't, I, I ain't got my glasses, man. Come on, let's go.
He's wanting to put it on the agenda.
I didn't put it on, I didn't put it on the agenda.
I just asked.
Well, it says, it says here, Mr. Franklin will present.
Okay, well.
Resolution to pass. So you, this is not your resolution.
Okay, can you, is go call for the vote?
Is this not your resolution? It's not my resolution.
Hey, well, you, you, we got, this little call for the vote and then that, what's going to be?
Um, has, has everybody got a resolution?
Everybody read it.
And I, I didn't ask you. I'm asking members of the council. Everybody have what, what they feel like.
They heard me. I'm going to win anyway.
I don't have a copy of it. I don't have a copy of it. Did he get it? The one with correct notes.
He had, this was passed to me. But we, we, the discussion is over. We can vote.
All right, so. This Franklin is my substitute motion. Resilience number fourteen twenty-two one. Adopting premium pay for certain municipal employees from American Rescue Plan. And the number in the revised amended resolution is seven hundred eighty-one thousand five hundred seventeen dollars. Provide premium pay. And then another sixty, under section five, six one thousand eight hundred forty-one dollars under the American Rescue Act. For. Premium pay portion. For C officials who are not covered by the premium type portion of the American Rescue Act, C counseling or appropriate total amount of six one thousand eight hundred forty-one. Percent reduction of revenue portion of the same act. And. The seven hundred eighty-one thousand, so this would be over eight hundred thousand dollars total that it would cost the city of Carolina West Town. And it would basically be a bonus to employees. Is that right, Mr. Franklin? And Mr. Franklin makes again, motion, a substitute motion on the resolution number fourteen twenty-two one is seconded by Ms. Crockett. Are you still seconding the motion, Ms. Crockett? Ms. Crockett? Have you seconded the substitute motion? Did Miss Crockett second the substitute resolution? Any other questions on the resolution? Comment. It's not called what?
How much money this is going to cost for shit? I got this heat right here.
Over eight hundred thousand dollars.
Explain to the people where the money came from. Don't act like I mean, you know, eight hundred thousand dollars. That's what the money was.
Eight hundred.
No, no, ma'am, the money, the money has been appropriated for water.
No, it has not. Who appropriated for water, Sue?
My understanding, we're talking about costing the city eight hundred forty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
Yes. That's the purpose.
That's, that's what. Cost of this is going to be, Mr. Treasurer, is that correct? Is that what? This ordinance, this, uh, resolution, calling for?
But that's the most, it, it, it may, it, it won't cost that much. Uh, the, the ordinance actually reads.
How much money, Mr. Treasurer, is it going to cost the city?
He tried to do it.
It, that's, is the, if everybody received the five, uh, five thousand, that it would cost that much. It's not going, it's not going to cost that much because everybody's not going to have the three hundred and. Uh, sixty-two hours that are required to, uh, receive the full pay. Uh, sixty two hours that are required to, uh, receive the full pay, uh, some people got hired, that, that, the cutoff, I think, is from. February second twenty twenty one to October thirty first, twenty twenty one, so some employees may have been here a month or two months, some people got hired in July, in June. And so, uh, if it's approved and if it's paid, then we will have to determine it, but that is the most it's gonna cost, and it's not gonna, it's not gonna cost.
And this is.
It, it's not gonna cost that much, that's, that, that's the.
It's not gonna cost that much. Can you give me a number?
No. That's the highest.
I can't, I can't, in good conscience, vote on something, I don't know.
It won't be more than that, so, so what you're doing is authorizing, that's the maximum.
To that amount, you know, like, if mayor wants us to authorize something up to a certain amount, that's all he, he asking us to authorize something up to.
What you're saying, you're doing same thing he was doing.
Yeah.
What you wrong don't make the right.
But you didn't say nothing when the mayor was doing. You was, you was approving everything, he said you wanted to hold on there, you wanted to make a motion on it.
Talking over each other, nobody here. I thought, I think.
Were you on the Zoom conversation?
This second one, yeah, I think still had the applause.
So, my question to the, uh, Treasurer is, it's not gonna cost us eight hundred forty three thousand, but it, it's gonna cost somewhere up around that number. If we went for this whole five thousand dollars.
What I, what I did was, I figured out. The number of current employees that we had, uh, working for the city as of.
Yeah.
October thirty first, and so I applied the total amount to all, all of the employees. I know going through the records, that everybody wasn't, hadn't, wasn't employed for, by the city for that entire period.
Right.
When we go, if you approve it, and it's, and if, if everything is approved, then we will determine the hours of each employee that were employed by the city on October thirty first. I know for a fact that there are several employees that, that were, that were hired in Oc, in October, there were some that were hired in Augs, in, uh, September. So we know that everybody's not gonna receive the full amount, that's why I know it's not gonna be that, that much, but if everybody did, so I wanted to.
But it could, it could be as much as.
It's not gonna be that much.
Million dollars.
How much?
Half a million, five hundred thousand. So somewhere between five hundred thousand, eight hundred thousand is the number that you're saying it possibly could be.
The highest you can go is eight hundred forty three thousand, three hundred fifty seven dollars and fifty cent, anything between, other than that, I couldn't give you a specific, uh, amount.
Well, Mr. Turner, what other cities around is, is you just want for the same thing, right?
Yeah.
So, listen to, other cities are doing the same exact thing, am I correct?
Yes.
Oh, other cities are doing.
Did the, did the league approve that we can do this?
It's not, okay, if, if this is not the municipal league, it's not approved, this is the American Rescue Plan Act.
Right, so what do these opinions?
The American Rescue Plan Act, the, 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 act that was passed by Congress, passed both houses of Congress. It's more like a stimulus plan, what they did was they're sending money to cities and states and counties, and that money is to be used for, it's for different areas that the funds can be used for, and this is a.
This is federal money?
Yes, sir.
Federal money, not our money?
Right, this is, this is from the American Rescue Plan Act, the federal government has stipulated that this money be used for, uh, and I'm gonna read from that. One, 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 uh, purpose for the use of funds is to respond to the public health emergency with respect to coronavirus disease twenty nineteen, COVID nineteen, or its negative economic impacts. Second, uh. Use of the funds is to respond to workers performing essential work during the COVID nineteen public health emergencies by providing premium pay to eligible workers of the metropolitan city, non entitlement unit of local government or county. That are performing such essential work, that's what this is, this is the premium pay portion, uh, you have a third, uh, use of the funds is for. The provision of government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue of such metropolitan city, non entitlement unit of local government or county due to the COVID nineteen public health emergency. That's the, that's the lost revenue portion, and then the fourth way, the fourth use of funds is to make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. So the actual, the federal act, um. That is one of the four uses that the, uh, federal act authorized to use the, the funds for, one of them is premium pay.
All right, I, I have one question, are elected officials gonna, uh, be included in the amount of money, five thousand or any other amount of money that comes out of this resolution?
The, now, the municipal league. Uh, in their opinion, they determined that, uh, that the clerks, that the, that the city clerk, city clerk and a treasurer could be included in the premium pay. The premium pay portion, uh, with, and that's just across the board, uh, in the states, but they do have, uh. Salary restrictions, uh, one of the salary, the, the salary restriction is that. The premium, the amount of premium pay should not take you over one and a half percent of the state average salary. So state of Arkansas average salary that the municipal league determined would be seven, six, sixty seven thousand, seven hundred dollars. So if their premium pay would take you above sixty seven thousand, seven hundred dollars, then you wouldn't be eligible for it. The people who wouldn't be eligible for it can be paid from lost revenues, lost revenues can be used for any reason that the city, for any, uh, lawful reason that the city determines that, that they want to use it for. So anyone that would not be eligible under the premium pay provision could be paid from lost revenues.
So, so. Possibly. Some, some would be in.
I, that is, is.
Somebody, possibly, likely officials will be included.
The, yeah, I mean, in, 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 the, the, from, the lost revenue portion can be used for any reason that you want to.
So does this resolution include elected officials, Mr. Franklin? Mr. Franklin? Do you know the answer?
He just read it out to me.
I, I can't hear you.
He just read it out for you, so can we just call for the vote?
Is that a yes or no?
It's, it's a my vote, but let my vote determine it, come on, it's, it's, you started holding us up, all this talking is, Miss St. Columbia, that vote, come on, let's, let's go.
Are you getting defensive?
No, I'm not getting defensive, I'm, I'm, I'm.
I just asked you a simple question, does it include elected officials?
Mr. Turner just read it to you, Mr. Man.
I'm not sure.
I, I'm just, well, he, he, he is.
I'm not sure it's that clear, I think so.
So.
I'm, I'm asking the sponsor of the resolution.
Okay, well, I'm telling you, Mr. Turner was my, when he responded for me, thank you so much, Mr. Turner, you're being so eloquent.
All right, well, I, I wanna make, I, I, I'll, I'll make a comment, and then we'll, if anybody else has a question or comment, I was talking to Mayor of, uh, Hermans just this morning, or this afternoon. And I asked her, are you gonna spend this pandemic money? Uh, to give to your employees and your council members, and she said, no, Lord, they'd ride me out of town, we're gonna use it on a health center, because we desperately need.
Okay.
A place for people to go for healthcare.
Okay.
We just got through talking for a long time about the needs we have for water and sewer utilities and improvements in this city. We just spoke a long time about the needs, the money, the money right now designated, that Mr. Patterson spoke of earlier, already designated. For that is about eight hundred thousand dollars, exactly how much this is for, so what we're doing is we're voting to spend this money on. City employees and ourselves, rather than on the much needed improvements in our water and sewer infrastructure for the city, including cleaning out Reservoir Hill, which has never been inspected or cleaned out since it was built. It's supposed to be inspected by state law, we have, it's set up to be a bid out for inspection. In the spring, when we're able to, to get to it, uh, when we're rec, when it's recommended that we do it, and it's gonna be about four, five hundred thousand dollars, West Tank that, that goes to our hospital, our nursing home. Yes, ma'am, that's exactly what it has to do with, because you're taking money out of our water and sewer improvements and you're giving it to ourselves, and our, our city employees need to know what we're doing, I mean, our city needs to know exactly.
Why you bring this up when we're discussing the water sewer? Now you want to bring it up to make it seem like the council is preparing to take something from the city, when we had that discussion, every time we asked you a question, you evaded the question, you never gave us a, a answer. If this is what you was saying, that this money, you should have said it that time with Miss Davis, Miss Crockett, Mr. Jeff, the money is in the, uh, care or whatever, and that, that's what we gonna use the money for, you never said that, so now you're trying to make it appear.
That's exactly what I did say.
No, you did not.
I did.
No, you did not.
I did.
No, you did not.
And not only that, Miss Crockett, you voted to appropriate the money for that, and now you're trying to appropriate it, now you're trying to appropriate it.
Ma'am, please don't holler at me, because I get offended when people holler at me.
The public has the right to know what we're doing.
Okay, that's what I've been telling you all night, so now you want them to know what you want them to know, but you don't want them to know what we asking you for, make up your mind, ma'am, make up your mind.
So, once again, you're talking over me, the public has the right to know what this resolution does.
When I was trying to tell you that the public had a right to know all of that stuff prior to this, you had it, no, you didn't, you ain't asked a question tonight.
All right, any other questions or comments about the resolution? If not called up.
Davis?
Yes.
St. Columbia?
I can't go on.
No, I just wrote yes or no. No, you always do that, you do that every time, you do it every time.
Miss Crockett, allow the, allow the votes to miss, or, or leave the room. Miss Crockett, if you cannot participate in a civil manner, allow. Allow people to vote, for the question that's on the floor, and you're interrupting. Miss Crockett, if you can't participate, please leave the room and let others do so, Mr. St. Columbia, you were voting.
I'm gonna have to understand, I, I can't, I don't understand, and I cannot do something I don't understand. I, if it's all federal money, I would say yes, but I. That's what, that's what we're saying here.
He just told you.
Yeah, I, I, I don't want to take away, I don't want to take away from the water company, and I don't, I'm like the mayor. If we're not gonna get our, our, our.
Just let it go, just focus, we do the next part.
Crockett?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Forward?
Yes.
I have four yeses, one abstention, and one absent.
Can you read the roll call back, please? I asked the roll calls, it's in the procedure, man, you all approved it, please call the roll back.
I voted yes.
I didn't ask you. The clerk is supposed to answer that question.
Davis, yes, St. Columbia abstained, Crockett, yes, Franklin, yes, Ethelie absent, forward, yes.
Thank you, all right, motion passes. All right.
What we do?
I'm not recognized too much. So we still have a quorum present? We're still in the meeting, we still have a quorum present, meeting has not been adjourned. All right, let me, uh, try to get back to the agenda.
Fire marshal.
We're still in a meeting, we still have a quorum, Mr. Brown, would you like to come forward, and we're gonna talk about the, the fire. Just come up here, and, and basically, one of the issues important city is, boy, last year, how many, how many single family vacant homes would you say we had fires last year, twenty twenty?
We had around a hundred and fifty structural fires.
And we had maybe fifty that we've been able to tear down and clean up?
That, that's correct, but out of the hundred and fifty structural fires that we had, probably, I would say at least seven of those were vacant houses.
So for everyone, so everyone, we clean up, there's another fire, and it's, it, would you say that a lot of that is arson, I mean, I, I've asked you these questions, I don't know what you're gonna say, but. Do you think most of it, or a lot of it, is attributed to arson?
Well, you know, ma'am, arson has to be proven, someone has, has to see it in order for us to determine, you know, it is arson, yeah, but it is what it is.
So, one of the things we've talked about, and you might want to explain to them, is why, uh, fire marshal position and arson investigations, how that works, I know I didn't understand it. But you have to not just only have credentials with the fire academy, but also police credentials, because it's a crime, so I just wanted you to explain that to them.
Well, uh, arson, in arson detection, you have to have so many hours from the Arkansas Fire Academy, and you have to have so many hours, uh, well, you, you have to have approximately forty hours, no, eighty hours, excuse me, eighty hours from the Arkansas Fire Academy, and you have to have the hundred hour course. That the police department provides, along with, along with other, other, uh, classes that are on the curriculum.
Do we have anybody that kind of approaches that now?
Yes, we do, we have, uh, one of my engineers is, uh, interested in the job, the only thing he has to do to, is go to the fire academy and get the eighty hours that he needs, and take the one hour, one hundred hour course from the police department, in which he can do that online.
So, explain to the council the, the idea behind the fire marshal, and how it affects arson investigation, how it might suppress some of the fire problems that we have.
Even though we've never had it in, in my twenty two years, it, it can deter, uh, these alleged arson fires and stuff like that, so it's a good program for us to have. He will actually go around and investigate fires and things of that nature, right, right now, as it stands, if, uh, the only way we would call the state fire marshal is that we have a death. So, but, so, so, uh, if we do get a fire marshal, it will most definitely help our city out.
So.
Yeah, other, other questions, go ahead, any, any other questions?
So this means we get a. Fire marshal, I understand you're saying it'll help our city out, but if you think it will, uh. The two, we, you know, stop some of these fires or something?
I think it would personally, a, as, as the fire chief of Heldon West, it, it would help us out to mention, so I most definitely approve the efforts, uh, in, in getting a, a fire marshal. That's great, that's great, that's great.
So we're having an arson, arsonist, uh, does this, definitely have a state, uh. Officer that comes in.
That's what I just explained, in order to get them here, it has to be a fatality.
It had what?
It has to be a fatality, has to be a death.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, sir, that's the only way the state fire marshal will come down.
Really?
Yes, sir.
And if I'm not mistaken, and I could be, we've had one of those in the last couple of years, we had a fatality.
And they, and, and they came down and investigated.
But otherwise, they don't come, and so we don't have the criminal investigative file that we need from both fire and police law courts, so be able to press the case, and so arsonists have been, uh, we have caught some.
Yes, we, we have.
But in order to prove most arson cases, very difficult, as she points out, you need somebody who's trained, certified to do it.
Have you come with any suggestions about it, because I don't see, I don't see some of that, I'm actually not said, I want to try and pay this person, or?
Well, the mayor actually brought this up to me a year or so ago, well, a year ago when I made chief, and, and this is something that this body will have to, uh, basically, you, you guys will have to, okay, and approve the position, and, uh.
What I'm saying is, we need to know, how, what I need to know.
I understand, I understand, I understand.
Without a pay grade.
I understand, so, to my knowledge, Miss Crockett, the mayor's just bringing it up, you know, we, we still have to. Get, get applicants for the position, so this is basically prelim, and, and this is, this, this won't be under the fire department, this is, this is a separate entity from the fire department. Yeah.
It would be a new position.
Yes.
Fifty thousand dollars is the proposed payment.
Mr. Franklin, this, this is just prelims, and this, this is just a discussion with you guys, and efforts, you know, to have a conversation about getting that position, it's, it's not in stone, this.
Yeah, we don't say it's not in stone, to make it come in stone, we need to know, well, I need to know, I can't speak for anybody, uh, that's just like us, parents, you know, before they had, in COVID, we.
Okay, I understand.
In order to advertise for the job, you gonna have to know how much you gonna pay, because you can't just say I need five hours.
I understand, that, that's, that's why, Miss Crockett, I'm saying that, that this is something that the mayor and I, I, the mayor and I discussed, he was asking my opinion of it, and that's why we. I, I have nothing to do with, with the, with the salary, all, the mayor asked my opinion of the position.
Yeah.
In or, in order to bring it to you guys, for you guys to vote on what you're talking about.
So you saying you wanted to do, if, if the position is created at fifty thousand dollars? So you saying you wanted to be, if, if the position is created at fifty thousand dollars?
That's what was recommended to me as a salary to get some money. How do you want me to answer that?
I want you to tell the truth.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to, Ms. Crockett. If you, if you will stop interrupting me and talking over to me, I'm trying to answer your questions correctly.
Ask me a question. I want you to answer.
Correctly, and, and I did not come up with the fifty thousand.
Ms. Crockett, Ms. Crockett, the fifty thousand dollars salary came from the person that's interested in the job. That was his desired salary. Nothing's in stone. Yeah, that, that was the desired salary from, okay, yeah, that was a desired salary from the individual.
But, but, Ms. Crockett, that didn't come to me directly, and I couldn't answer it directly. But the position requires a hundred hour course, starts a police academy, eighty hour fire inspector course. The person that she, uh, is, said is interested in it is asking for that amount.
And you say he's not eligible. Did you say that?
No, no, that, that's a separate entity from the fire department. He, he'll, but be under, uh, the mayor and this body. Just, just as well as the, the code enforcement, uh, department that we have. It's, it's a separate entity from the fire department. Well, I'm just saying. You, you guys have to vote on it, you know.
So, um, we're doing a budget now. It'll be submitted December first, uh, and so any, any input that council would have, um, on a position like that. And one of the questions is fifty thousand dollars, so we'll be going right for a fire marshal, uh, in Arkansas, who has his credentials and.
In what cities? Cuz you always know.
In cities, the first class or cities of ten thousand.
You always know the name of the opposite. You don't know no city got a fire marshal. They pay fifty thousand dollars.
There are lots of cities that have fire marshals. What I, what I, what I said was, one of the questions that we probably need an answer to is, what is the average sub, pay? Well, the answer I've gotten is forty-five to fifty. So we probably ought to verify that, and we will put something like that in the budget. Uh, it would take time to advertise it and so forth, but, um, we're introducing the subject tonight, so if you have any questions or additional information, we can gather that for you.
So they can guarantee that he will be chosen if someone else has the credential and I read, cuz he had the same issues, yeah.
So, I think the question is towards the maximum, and I'm not trying, if, just like the instance, cuz the jobs don't have to be advertised. And so you advertise the job and Johnny Walker Redd come from somewhere else applies. He has everything that he already needs, the hundred hours, the eighty hours, the everything that he already needs. I just don't understand.
But the position would be, Ms. Ford, you're right. The position would be advertised. He could apply for it, so could others. And you're absolutely correct.
You probably should have arranged that, because this other, or whoever, the best, the better candidate may not have attained all the credentials yet, but he would be, uh, some leader in there, six months to or a year, whatever, to get this.
So.
And if he's fire marshal, there's no way for him to start the process of trying to take these classes, so not the, not the fire academy, cuz I know that's a, a thing, but like the hundred hours that you're talking about, probably, it's not a way. So that when it, if, in and with the job, in and with, when the job comes up, if it comes up, that he'll already have, you know, some of the things he need, he won't have to wait to ease, applies for the job to get it.
Well, the individual I'm talking about now that's currently in the fire department, he has the majority of hours that he needs. So, so he only needs the eighty hours from, from the fire academy and a hundred hour course from the police department.
I know he can't go to the fire academy, but he's not possibly.
Oh, he's, he's going to have to go to the fire academy.
No, I'm saying right now. No, I'm saying right now. I'm saying he could possibly go on and start on his hundred hours for the police department. Uh, do you have to be, my question is, does he have to already be the fire marshal before he can take those hundred hours?
No.
Okay, see, that's what I'm saying. So then, when and if the job comes open, he'll, he can put on his thing, I've completed the hundred hours for the police.
True.
So, that's what I wanna ask.
Yeah, he, he's gonna have to go to the fire academy to, to, to complete the courses that he needs in order for the job.
I think what she's saying is, can he, can you sit, without him having the job, can he go to the fire academy?
Yes, 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 yes.
Uh, so we can already go and send him.
Well, well, the thing of it is, Ms. Crockett, is that this, this is just hypothetical. We're just, we're just discussing the position per se. You guys, you can set whatever, whatever, uh, uh, guidelines you want as far as the position. We're, we're just, the mayor came being asked me to help out and Chief Smith to help out in efforts to get.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. What, what we trying to say is, when we approve the job, we, we won't, since you think that he's the best candidate in all of this, that you don't want somebody else coming in with better, that already got these. So if he already got one, the job come open, then he's in the running already.
Well, people are gonna have to apply for the job. We're just here, we're just here to get the information out to you guys to let you know. Well, basically, the mayor's putting it out there, so you guys know what he's attempting to do. I'm just here to answer certain questions in reference to what I know about a fire marshal and help you guys out to make a decision whether you wanna have the position. That, that's why I'm here.
I was always under the impression, you didn't have to get a jet, cuz I could out murder in time.
Whoa, whoa.
Burn my outside, and I knew it was a large city, it's a big shot ball, so.
Yeah.
And we called the state fire marshal in at that time, and that's why I had that quick.
Okay. Well, when, when I consult with them, Mr. St. Columbia, that, that's what I was told. That's what I was told. And I, you know, they have a lot of things going on and, 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 and we have house fires all the time. They can't come down here every day. So then, this is what I was told.
Chief Smith and I verified that too. The person who does it is actually native of Halmud. And, uh, and does a very good job, but he's, he's no longer allowed to become a licensed accountant.
Oh, ma'am, I swear to God, I ain't trying to give you shit again, but I'm.
You don't have anybody from the governor, who doesn't.
I'm dealing with a whole lot of shit, man.
I mean, it doesn't take much observation to know that we've had a serious problem with arson here. Uh, and the only way to deter that is adequately investigate, prosecute it, and they can't prosecute it unless they get a good file, a good case on it, and they can't get a case on it unless you have somebody that knows what you're doing. So anyway, we have one particular individual who was actually in another state, a fire marshal already.
True.
And that's one of the sources of information we've gotten. And, uh, he would obviously be an eligible, strongly eligible candidate, but he wouldn't be guaranteed anything, as Ms. Ford pointed out. Anyway, that, this is all. Any other questions before we wrap this up? And we can ask questions later if we need to. The two Brown I'm doing where I wanna say one quick thing, then we'll actually be the whole agenda. Uh, the fire hydrant program, and I want, want you to explain, if you would, quickly, why the fire hydrant, uh, process, the, the, uh, and I'm getting tired, I'm sorry, the fire hydrant uh, inspection process, why it has to be done the way it's being done in order for our ISO rating to be approved and so forth?
Well, uh, Mr. Patterson is over the water department. He may be able to answer some of these questions better than me, because that's his expertise, but in reference to the fire department, we have to have him operating, uh, we have to have him serviced. And, and actually, the mayor and I spoke today. And we're in the process now of getting ready to be, uh, graded for ISO next year. So Mr. Patterson is doing a great job, and the mayor did a great job by getting these people in to fix these plugs or to service them, because they hadn't been servicing a while. So this is helping us out a lot.
And we, you had.
On the fire.
But what's wrong with the ones that still got the black bags on?
Well, well, they're, they're working. The ones that, that, that have the black, they're not operating, and that was our indication a, as, as we respond to different fires, we may need them, that the ones with the black bags, they aren't working. And they may have, ha, ha, have to order parts for them or something like that. Yeah.
That's right, and.
Yeah.
I'm just asking, I was speaking, was asking.
Yeah, that's why. They, they're out of, out of order. Yeah.
So the next, the, all of the fire, uh, plugs have been now inspected, except for the industrial park. After you said that to me today, I asked and checked on it. They still do have to do the industrial park, but
Yes.
Other than that, it's about, it's almost hundred percent as far as inspections. The next issue, if you look at the list that we sent you, uh, it lists those that need repair or replacement. And Mr. Patterson and Chief Brown are gonna go over that list and determine if there are any that we don't need anymore to be online, or in fact, some we should add. And then come back, will my correct advice to the council as far as it's finished, or something?
That's correct.
Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, Mr. Patterson, prior to this, the water department, the, the fire department used to let, let, let the pressure off these.
Well, no, 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 no. That's, that's, that's a misconception. Uh, uh, all of the fire plugs are under the water. We, as the fire department, we just used to put the maintenance and upkeep.
Right. Mr. Patterson, you had a crew, uh, out there, west of London, would go around, letting all, flushing their hives out, right, room. Y'all just don't have it. Y'all, you did it in the past, right? When you see they was hitting, they were, you had, you had a guy with, some guy with a green truck, right? They would go around, hook the hose up and let the water out, right? So y'all, i- if y'all had the manpower, you could've done that, right, room.
Yeah, I mean, we do it now.
Yeah, that, yeah, they, they totally done it.
So, cuz you sent us a report, so, well, somebody, so the report was, that every so often you have to let the pressure off. So we, we let these folks come in and just make some money.
Now, with purpose, with purpose, that's, that's not true.
The purpose of these people coming in is to charge.
Which was then? Okay. But you all can do it as well, right? If you had the manpower.
Well, uh, changing our fire is an easy job.
Okay.
It's not an easy job. First you got a boot at the bottom of this fire.
Okay.
That stops the water.
Okay.
All these fires are dry, sir.
Dry. Okay.
So that means that when you cut them off.
They come up.
That boot come up, water comes into them, they give you water. When you cut them off, all this water, boot go down. All this water comes out of me.
Okay, okay, okay.
So, so the reason, the reason is Patterson and, and Chief Brown, we're using the third party is so they can tag them and inspect them, and we could submit that with our ISO report to get a lower ISO rating.
I have a few, and it is that I, 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 I have been on the fire department twenty-two years, and, and it's only been a couple of instances that we've had a fire, and we had a plug that something was wrong with it. But yet and still, once we reported it the next day, the water company is always, they've always came and fixed it. We've never, so we don't have a, a wa, a, a fire plug issue. So I just wanna put that out there. We don't have an issue. We're just getting, we're just getting maintenance, we're getting it fixed.
The, the reason I was asked by both of you to do this, and I, as the council in turn, was because of the ISO application, not, not because we can't do it, or we don't know that we're, but we have had fire hydrants that we pulled up to, and if we didn't have tank trucks with water in them, we wouldn't have had fire, water to put those fires out.
Correct.
So, i- i- if you have one out and it's your house and you run out of tank of water, it's an issue.
That's correct.
Anyway, thank you for your time. It's late. Any other questions or comments before we adjourn? And if you all accept that motion now, for adjournment. Anybody wanna adjourn? Mr. St. Columbia needs adjournment. If there's no objection.